Thank you. Let me know when.
Your recordings.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item of the evening is Slate Communications update. Kristin Knoll from Slate Communications is present to give an update to City Council on the State of the City, Inglewood Magazine, the Fourth of July, and the creation of a new signature event. Welcome.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Good evening. All right. We have a couple items to discuss this evening, so I'd like to jump right into the State of the City planning. We are well on our way to planning this great event that's going to be on June 1st. We have completed the first design comps of the invitation artwork, and that should be in your packet. Those that received hard copies, I just want to point out that the day was wrong. So it's Thursday, June 1st, not Wednesday, June 1st, but that has been corrected. But otherwise, the theme is the art of community, and the invitation reflects kind of the fun artistic feel that the community has. And the prezi presentation and all other collateral will then flow and look similar to this invitation design, colorful and vibrant. And so that's the direction of the invitation. Those invitations will be mailed one month prior to the event, which is next week. So we'll start doing communication and outreach, both electronically and mailed invitations, and then through the city's typical communication channels to start promoting the event. My staff and I are working on drafting the presentation outline, and I've had a first really rough outline drafted and sent that to Inglewood staff, Allison and Murphy, and the next step will be to meet, to talk about, you know, the exact bullet points of what the presentation will include going from there. And then we'll continue working on what the actual prezi presentation looks like, the visuals, the photos, how can we enhance what's being spoken more visually in the presentation. The goal is to have a first draft of the speech to the mayor in mid-May, and then we'll have some time to refine what that looks like for about two weeks ahead of time, so we really nail down the talking points and the visuals that tie into the presentation. And so we're on track for that. And then we would like to do an event run-through a day or two prior to the event to test the AV equipment, make sure microphones are working, make sure we know where people in the gathering areas will be, and ensure that the event is smooth and people know kind of where to go. That walkthrough will really be for staff and for the mayor, but all of you are certainly invited if you'd like to participate as well. Some event logistics that we are working on is obtaining a caterer for the event, and Allison has been working on that logistics, so she has an update on that.
We did get a quote from Moe's for light food. That was around $2,800 for roughly 300 people, and that's what we're estimating for the quotes. The other question that came up with the catering is the question of whether or not we want to sell alcohol at the event or have alcohol at the event. So we thought that was a question for council to discuss tonight and give us a consensus.
I would say no way.
No booze?
No booze.
Those want to weigh in? Councilmember Berntine?
Do you even have enough time to go through the liquor board for the special license?
It would be really tight. It would go to the Liquor Authority on May 3rd, and then it needs to be posted for 10 days. So it couldn't go to the state until about May 17th, and they could take up to 30 days, so.
All right. It's kind of too late to...
Councilmember Yates?
I would say that alcohol would not be appropriate for a city event.
Thank you. I think we've got some consensus on that. Hopefully that makes life a little easier. Anything else on the State of the City?
And for the catering costs, I mean, if you're all comfortable with moving ahead with those quotes, we can get something for food for that night.
Did we get catering quotes from anyone else besides Moe's Barbecue?
No, not yet, but we will.
Okay. We probably need some additional quotes to try to keep the cost as low as possible. Councilmember Russell?
Do we have a budget for this? What, I mean, did we talk about like $5,000 for this, or?
That was only Slate's fee. Recall that, you know, the concept in the past was looking for sponsorships from local restaurants. I think the feedback from staff was that it was a little bit difficult, given the parameters that Tri-County wanted us to work with on something like that. And so now I think that's leading us more towards looking at a cater. Manager Keck, do you have any response to if the council wanted to cater this event, where funding would come from?
Yeah, actually, in our special events budget in and of itself, there's funding in there that could accommodate this. Obviously, we'd want to make that as the cost for any food to be as frugal as possible, but you could accommodate it within your budget.
Thank you.
You know, my thought is the number 2,800 seems a little high, given the scope of kind of what we're doing. But so maybe we reel it in on the number of people, or we consider trying to get a few more quotes to see what else is out there to try to get us a little more bang for our buck.
I would add just that the benefit of asking for RSVPs to this event will really help us determine, you know, how many people we expect to feed. So we'll get a quote that is higher than probably the total number of people attending. And once we get those RSVPs in, we'll coordinate with the caterer, you know, one week, 10 days prior to the event, to finalize those numbers, and we'll be a lot more closer and in line with what those actual numbers are.
Great. And so hopefully you can kind of negotiate a per-person kind of rate, and then kind of get a deadline to come back to them and say, this is the actual number of the party. Councilmember Berntine?
The wastewater treatment plan event was amazing, and Strawberries Catering did a beautiful job.
Who was that?
Strawberries.
Okay.
Don't write them down. They are a shared in business. And while I understand that that's, I mean, I have no problem with doing that. They did a beautiful job, and especially when you've got a multi-city event going on. But this is for Ingle, so I would just like to make sure that we use an Inglewood business.
Yes, absolutely.
Just thinking out loud, perhaps, you know, catering from, yeah, thanks to you, from Nixon's, their company here locally, might be a good idea as well. Any other local caterers you guys can think of, please pass those along to staff, so we can try to get a quote from all of our local folks. Anything else on the State of the City?
One thing that's not, that we haven't talked about yet, is we are moving ahead with the resident feature ad, so that will be available to play along with the economic development video that night. So you can have both videos if you want in your presentation.
Do you have a deadline?
Or what?
I'm sorry. Explain again what that was?
We're producing a resident feature video that-
Oh, okay.
-to go along with the economic development.
Oh, all right.
Great. Councilmember Yates?
What does the $2,800 buy?
That's a good question. I have it here. It's basically pounds of meat, 50 pounds of pork and turkey with then slider buns, and then 10 dishes of two different sides.
So with this starting at 6 o'clock, are we serving dinner to these folks, or are we just having little munchy type things?
More hors d'oeuvres, kind of.
Yeah.
They were going to provide appetizer plates, so that people would be inclined to take smaller amounts. But they, I know that they're also willing to work with us, and we can reach out to other people, too, and ask for smaller amounts.
I'm kind of questioning the extent of the catering that we need to do on this. I mean...
Agreed.
No. So, so the question is, is how much do we want to cater this? I mean, do we just want to have coffee and drinks and maybe dessert or something, or, you know, something sweet to munch on, or do we, are we going to be, I mean, 50 pounds of meat?
I think we need some other options. Councilmember Martinez?
I just wanted to throw out there that Cafe 180 also does catering, and they're local just right over here, and they're a great option.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Russell?
I personally think we need appetizers and finger food, since it's dinnertime rather than sweets. I'm sure we're not going to feed them a dinner, but I think it's not fair to expect them to come at dinnertime and not get anything.
Mayor Protem Gillett?
Will El Tepeuan be open by then? They did a great catering job recently.
I don't know. It's a good question.
They did for the other event.
I'll have to ask. You know, they may be capable of catering prior to their opening of their brick and mortar through their food truck and others, but perhaps that's the one to add to the list to try to reach out to. If we need a contact there, I think I've got one, so I'm happy to provide that offline here. Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to say ACE may have some other suggestions on local businesses that offer catering. They might know.
Thank you. Would like to move us on maybe to the, you know, the guest list. I know that we're, City Staff is working diligently on putting together the guest list, which, you know, we kind of verbally went over in the past, top 100 businesses, board and commission members, you know, regional sort of VIPs, that kind of thing. I guess I would encourage staff, when they're ready, to send that to council, and council take a look at that. And if there's somebody we missed, somebody you want to add to the list, make sure and get those to City Staff, so that we can get those folks added to the list. I think, you know, having talked a bit offline, that we're not too, too worried about the number of invites, so, you know, adding on, I don't think is a huge problem. So take a look at that list and add on as you see appropriate. And then as far as the atrium, you know, audiovisual logistics, have we sort of looked at that or figured any of that out for overflow, if we do actually go over capacity of Hampden Hall?
We still need to discuss the logistics of AV if overflow is in here. But otherwise, I think that generally we'll have space, you know, available and options if Hampden Hall becomes too full.
Great. Any other questions or comments regarding the State of the City? Did you have some? Nope. Okay. We'll move on to the magazine or wherever you want to go. Councilmember Russell?
Can I ask one question?
Please.
On the, I just noticed on the board and commission members on the invitation list, have they been updated? Because I see some of the new members aren't listed on here.
Thank you for that. We'll ask staff to take another look.
You have a couple of old directors on here, so you might want to...
Yeah, it needs a little TLC. We'll get, working on that.
Great. So really quick Inglewood Magazine update. We are working fast and furious this week on finalizing the magazine, which is going to publication printers on Friday. So one more draft will be sent to Inglewood staff tomorrow, and we'll be doing our final kind of touches over the next few days, going to print on Friday. And then that will hit mailboxes around May 10th, which is about two weeks before registrations start for the summer events and activities in the recreation guide, which was our goal, to give residents enough time to look through the guide and start registering or start thinking about registering for those summertime events.
Exciting.
Yeah. Any questions about the magazine?
Councilmember Rosson?
Is two weeks enough time for families to decide when their kids are going to do swim lessons and things like that? Is that pretty normal for our, for our press?
The rec guide usually gives, I think, closer to four weeks, but we had an accelerated timeline on this magazine, but-
Be up on the website before then, then, before two weeks, the classes?
We could certainly talk about how we would get it up. I mean, the files will be done and ready.
Yeah, by the time it goes to the printers.
Mm-hmm. So we can talk about other ways to-
I would just think that, I mean, I'm just thinking about kids and preparing. Two weeks before is, parents often plan those things way ahead. I'd hate to lose the market for the recreation.
I think that Parks and Rec felt comfortable with it, because they did their, they still did their, what version? They still covered in their-
Oh, right.
-in their last activity guide enough of what's coming up, that they felt comfortable with this. Actually, we worked the schedule around their, what they felt comfortable with.
And they did, we are duplicating some of the same content from the previous rec guide, including some of the summer camps.
We just encourage if we can put it on the web.
Sure. Yeah, we want to get it up and out as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates, did you have something there? Will we get a look at this, or when is this actually planned on going out again?
So it's going to the printer on Friday. I would suggest, you know, as soon as we have the PDF, that it can certainly go to council before you actually get a hard copy.
Great.
I would say I'm going to publication printers on Monday, so it takes them about 24 hours to get the plates ready. And I'm doing a pre-press check on Monday, so it would probably be middle of next week that we would have those final PDFs ready for others to see.
Great. I think as this comes out, you know, perhaps after it comes out or as it's printed, perhaps coming back to council for some feedback about, hey, we love this section, we love that section, and maybe this is something that can improve. Or, you know, one of the things in my mind was, again, reaching out to the chamber to try to offer some opportunity for them to kind of give a schedule of their upcoming events and highlight some of what they're doing.
Yeah, absolutely. This, you know, publication can certainly grow and change, and we will absolutely look for your feedback on what you like or what you'd like to see changed for the next issue.
Very exciting. Anything else on the magazine? Questions, comments? Okay, let's move on.
All right. July 4th. We've been doing a lot of planning for July 4th, knowing that it is a big event here. Allison and I did an onsite visit just this past week with South Suburban, with Inglewood Parks and Rec, with the Police Department, and spent almost two hours walking the site, mapping out where vendors are going to go, where activities have historically taken place, since I'm new to the event. And we've been actively soliciting food and activity vendors, and have a pretty solid list so far, definitely looking for more vendors. But we're up to seven food and snack vendors as of today, so we're moving through their registration process. And we have a safety meeting scheduled in two weeks that Vance has coordinated, so we're moving forward with the safety operations of the event. And we're also finalizing the July 4th sponsorship outreach. So a lot of things going on with that event.
Questions or comments regarding Fourth of July? Okay, let's go ahead and move on.
And the signature event, Allison and I have met twice with the members of the business community. I think the first meeting, we had five members, and this last meeting last week, we had seven or eight who are still interested in participating in an event that is business-focused. We still have not finalized what that looks like yet, but everyone is really enthusiastic and interested in staying connected. They said, you know, one of the real benefits to a partnership like this is that they feel like they have city support, and they have connections to other businesses that could potentially kind of help boost and enhance whatever this might be. So we're still trying to figure out what that looks like. I don't know, Allison, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that the community members are just really enthusiastic, and they're really dedicating a lot of their time to this, so that's exciting to see. And we want to keep the momentum going.
Questions or comments regarding the event? Heard a lot of good feedback regarding the meetings, so thank you for having those. You know, I think one piece of feedback that came back, maybe I can pass along, is an idea of what the budget sort of looks like for this type of an event. And, you know, I know that one of the initial probably conversations is the location, and should it be on South Broadway, and are we going to shut down Broadway, or are we going to have it somewhere here at the city center or somewhere else? And maybe some of those logistics could be hashed out with some of the budgeting and figuring out, how much would it logistically cost us, and how much of our, percentage of our budget would that eat up? And maybe they could start to make some, you know, recommendations based upon that.
And I would add something else that we've been discussing is timing. When would this event take place? And the partners that have been in the meetings are really conscious about having enough time to plan something that is both impactful and successful, and not rushing, you know, whatever it is that we decide. So that's why we want to keep the momentum going and, you know, really talk about what next steps are, and is it something that, you know, we can do this fall that is successful. Continuing to look at that.
Thank you. Questions or comments regarding Signature Event? Anything else from Slate or Communications?
Not on my end. Unless you have any questions for me?
Anything more generally? Okay. Thank you so much for coming down and giving us an update. All that is very exciting stuff. We'll look forward to getting another update very soon. I'll move us on to the agenda item number two, which is our Public Information Officer update. Communications Manager Allison Carney is here to update council on upcoming events. Good evening, Manager Carney.
You have so many events in May that I gave you your own printout this time, because you're going to be busy. Tomorrow night, the Chamber is holding a after-hours business at Belco Credit Union in Sheridan. That's from 5:00 to 7:00. On Monday, May 1st, at the Bruon Broadway, they're holding, some city staff is holding a public input meeting for the streetscape improvements that you've all approved. That's from 9:00 to 10:00 at the Bob. And that's for business owners and property owners, but also for anyone from the public that's just interested in hearing about those improvements. On Thursday, May 4th, is the Rite Aid Grand Opening at 10:00 a.m. That evening at 7:00 p.m., in this room is the Excel Partners for Energy Renewable Energy Workshop for Residents. On Friday at 7:30 is your Tri-Cities Meeting at Broken Tea Clubhouse with Sheridan and Littleton. Tuesday, May 9th, 8:30 a.m., meeting here with Congresswoman Deget. Thursday, May 11th, is the groundbreaking for Charles Hay School. That's at 5:00 p.m. And Tuesday, May 16th, is your joint meeting with the Inglewood School Board Members. That's on the Inglewood campus at 6:00 p.m. And then Monday, May 22nd, instead of having a study session, you will have the Citizen of the Year Celebration at the Malley at 6:00 p.m. So I'm, all of these have been added to your calendar, but if you want me to email this to you, or if this printout is enough, I know you have a lot coming up.
Questions or comments regarding upcoming events? Mayor Protem?
Just want to let council know that I will not be available on May 5th, the Tri-Cities meeting. I'm scheduled out of town.
Thank you.
I do know what's happening, and not showing up, just do not show up.
Thank you. Also, one other thing perhaps to add for council's benefit is the ACC graduation, I believe is happening May 10th. I am looking for a fill-in, if anybody would be interested in attending with Manager Keck, to help congratulate some of our Inglewood grads. I'd appreciate that, so please check your calendar and see if you are available that evening for the graduation at DU. Also, you know, I did RSVP for the Charles Hay Round Baking, telling them that I would speak, and now I'm realizing I might be out of town. And so Mayor Protem, I don't know if you're capable of perhaps filling in on May 11th at 5:00 p.m. I might need some help there, but we can chat a little bit about that.
Yeah, let's chat.
Perhaps offline.
I can do it if you can.
Great. Thank you so much.
Go ahead.
Okay, great.
I just can't do the 10th oddly.
No problem. Thank you for checking your schedule. Yeah, I figured, I checked on you first, because I figured that would be a nice, easy commute. Other questions or comments regarding the communications update? Okay, thank you, Manager Carney. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 3. This is Alliance for Commerce in Inglewood Board Update. We've got some committee members here from the Alliance of Commerce in Inglewood to give us an update, to give an update to City Council. Good evening. Please join us. Are you welcome? Thank you. I'll turn it over to you, Madam Chair.
Hello, I'm Andrea Mannion, Chair of ACE.
Jason White, past Chair.
Amy Gago, Ms. M.
Thank you. We'll skip introductions. I think we know everybody here. Actually, Allison McKinney-Brown might be only, the only new face, our new city attorney, so.
And of course, we have our awesome staff, Darren and Brad here, so very supportive, so I have to give a shout out to them.
She could use the mic a little bit.
Oh, sorry.
Got to kind of get in there.
So we're just going to provide an update of what ACE has been doing. I think in your packets, you have a copy of the questionnaire that we have. So we've been going out in the business community and conducting interviews with business owners. So we've interviewed around like 25 to 30 so far. Interviews keep rolling in, so it's hard to have an exact number right now. But they've ranged from all industries of businesses, including manufacturing, retail, restaurants, healthcare, auto repair, coworking spaces, and coffee houses. So I'm just going to kind of summarize some of the main common threads throughout the questions that we've asked. So a lot of businesses, when we asked them why they chose Inglewood, they've all said Inglewood is a great location, because it's centrally located, there's more available and affordable space than Denver, and that opening a business was an easier process here than most other cities. So we heard great responses about that. Other things that are going well, they saw lots of potential in Inglewood for opportunities for growth. So most of the businesses we've spoke to have had a lot of growth, and they think it's because of the area that they're in. So there's also lots of positive comments on the licensing process, and comments on how easy the sales tax filing is on the website. So that's good. For improvements, a lot of businesses along Broadway said they would like more visibility and signage, especially because with the 30 mile-per-hour speed limit on Broadway, they have said too many times, people just drive by every day and never notice something, you know, that a business has been there forever, and they may not notice for a long time, because they just drive through. All of them mentioned definitely more business events. They want to draw more people into the area. A few people said shorter or streamlined application process for smaller events. So a few businesses said they'd like to hold small events, but the process is very lengthy, and they haven't heard word back on a lot of them yet, so. How can Inglewood help? They definitely, again, really emphasize a lot more events, especially B2B networking, more parking, more police presence along Broadway. And some would like more info on the Neighborhood Rehab Program, especially with the Enterprise Zone credits and any other tax incentives that they may not know about. They also said permits could be faster, and a lot mentioned taking SBDC training classes. So those were quite a few responses. So our goal for ACE is we try to interview two businesses per month, per ACE member. And so a few of us had have had a difficult time actually, you know, getting the business owner to sit down with us, and I think that's because they don't really know about ACE. And I know myself, I've experienced where I called a business owner, and they're like, oh, so you're with the city? And it's like, no, not really. And then I think they think I'm a solicitor spammer, so we don't ever hear back. So one thing, one solution we kind of thought up was, was creating an introduction letter that ACE members can use when we approach businesses, that like says what ACE is, what our names are, and maybe something, you know, that says like, the city would like your feedback. It'd be very appreciative. So we have a little more credibility there to get interviews scheduled. In the future, we said we'd like to see a budget for maybe a quantitative study done every three or five years, so we can get actual more substantial scientific data we can use. And then that case, we'll have to sit down and really understand like which questions we want to ask, based on like what data we're trying to get out of it. Next is ACE's Ambassador Program in coordination with the Greater Inglewood Chamber of Commerce. So this one's really exciting, because Randy Penn actually came to our meeting this month, and he told us he's allergic to meetings. And so we are very honored that he attended ours, but we're going to be partnering with him and the- ours. But we're going to be partnering with him and the Chamber on also drafting a welcome letter signed by the mayor. And adding that, so the Chamber has like a new business welcome package that they give out. And so ACE would like to be a part of that with a welcome letter and maybe add in like the Inglewood Business Resource Guide in there, and then ACE's introductory letter, so that when there is a new business, people know about us and kind of know Inglewood resources to go to. And then ACE also has ideas on also maybe creating anniversary business gifts. So kind of trying to find data of like how long a business has been here, maybe give them something for a five-year, 10-year, you know, 20-year anniversary, instead of just focusing on new businesses all the time. So we're really excited about that. Also, at our meetings, we've been inviting city departments to come make presentations at our meetings, so we understand better what city resources there are. And we also would like more business owners to actually attend our meetings. So if they are interested in a particular area of need, they can come and join in and learn about them as well. So this month, we actually had Economic Development Team. May, we have the Inglewood Police Department. July, Inglewood Licensing. September is Inglewood Public Works. October is the Inglewood Code Enforcement. November is a Small Business Development Center. And then next year, we're going to partner with some more business partners like SBA Score, Chambers, and non-bake business leaders. And then we also want to just try to improve our communication with the business community. So I've been trying to get word out about ACE and other ACE members to invite people to our meetings, and then just posting more Next Door to kind of get the word out about us and that we're here. So, and you'll probably see me a few times at City Council Meetings just giving like a new business update. So that's what we have going on.
Fantastic. Thank you for that. Questions or comments from City Council? Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you so much for coming, and I really appreciate all the great work you guys are doing. I know we have a lot of home-based businesses here in the city. Are you, are they on your to-call list too, or is it mostly brick-and-mortar businesses?
So that one's kind of hard because, well, the city staff helps us with the business list, but those are mostly because they have permits or licensing. But I'm trying to reach out on Next Door, and actually yesterday, there's this great small business thread happening.
I saw that.
So I'm trying to find, you know, the others that we may not know about because they don't have a license. So it's mostly just getting out and like networking with others to find those people and hopefully get them involved as well. So, I mean, the lists we have right now are basically just a lot of brick-and-mortars because they have a license or sales tax license because we know about them. But yeah, we're trying to reach out to everyone.
Thank you. Councilmember Rietsch?
You'd mentioned that one of the concerns was the time it takes to get permits issued. What, can you be a little bit more specific about that? What kind of type, what kind of issues are they running into?
I will have to get back to you on that because all I saw was that permits could be faster. So that was the only comment made. But I could follow up with that business and see if I can find out more specifics on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
Thanks for the subtext, too. So I was going to ask a little bit more about the survey data, too. Are you putting it in some sort of a Excel sheet or something in comparison so we can know how many said this, and if it was everybody, or one or two, or?
Yeah, so staff is putting it into like a big Excel spreadsheet that we have on a Google Drive that we can look at.
Great. And even the difference between Broadway businesses versus others, because I think there's always a real difference in some of the things.
Yeah, there are. Yeah, on their comments or what, yeah. You can tell the Broadway businesses with the responses.
Yeah. Okay, great. That's great. Thanks.
You, Councilmember Berantin?
Have to, kind of to go off of what Councilmember Olson said, I was concerned about what you guys were doing with the survey information. And is the Community Development Department using that and then giving that information back to you, you said? They're putting the information together?
Right.
Okay. And then how many surveys do you intend to get, and are you sectioning off the city to get so many from each area, or how many are you trying to?
We're trying to get just as many as we can. So right now, we just have a list put together for us by staff of all the businesses out there for right now, and we're not really targeting any specific area. Just each ACE member goes out and tries to do, you know...
Just trying to get as many to talk to you right now as possible.
Yeah, and it's just more to get word out, too. I mean, eventually, I would love for the businesses to just come to us and tell us these things. But it's a good like introductory to get us out there for now.
And then, I guess, I apologize for the last round of Board and Commission's appointments because it seems that, in looking back on it, that there was some confusion on how many members you have. Because when I went back and looked at the charter, I noticed that you have a member, and maybe that's why you didn't get up right away, listed as an alternate. When there is no alternate for that board.
Right.
So we have an alternate for a board that doesn't have an alternate when we had open positions as well on the board. So I apologize for the confusion. We were trying to get all of that. Our city attorney's going to be going through all of that, and so obviously we need to eliminate the position that never existed and make sure a board member is considered a board member when we obviously had open positions.
Yes.
So for that, I apologize if there was any confusion on that, and certainly if there was any confusion to you, a new person serving on the boards. But we respect your time and that you applied for it, and certainly appreciate that you're working on this board. I think you could consider yourself a full member, but...
Yes, and I want Amy to.
Work on, work on re-titling you, so thank you.
Yeah, she's been a great member. She's gone, she's done tons of interviews already, so just being brand-new, so.
I'm sorry about that.
I just wanted to add a couple of comments. I thank you all for being here and for your service to the city of Inglewood. It's great working with you guys. It's kind of the liaison there. Just a little bit about the questionnaire. I think that, you know, keep in mind, Council, this is sort of an unscientific approach, and I think really it's just trying to build more relationships with individual businesses. You know, I think that the Council should really consider funding a more scientific methodology for business feedback, much like the citizen survey. That, I think that type of data would be invaluable for us moving forward. You know, right now, I think the results of the surveys are mostly anecdotal, you know, and I think, you know, perhaps drilling down to a particular complaint or something like that can be very beneficial to that business and perhaps help us identify other issues. But it's never really going to get us to the point of saying, you know, some sort of real scientific sort of statement of where we are. And I think if we did it every few years, like we did the citizen survey, we'd really be able to track business satisfaction with our services over a period of time, which again, I think would be really invaluable. Appreciate your communication efforts with the Chamber. You know, I think coming up with this joint letter to welcome new businesses makes a ton of sense, and I applaud that. I did want to throw out there that the Broadway 3400 Block Meeting is scheduled for, I think it's May 1st. Love to see some ACE participation there if possible. I think regardless of what comes forward out of that, I'd love to see that project itself just be forwarded through ACE and just get a recommendation or any feedback regarding the project itself. That would probably have to happen this next month, my guess is, because we don't want to hold up that process too much. But if you could slip it in your agenda perhaps for next month, maybe that's something that we could get a real brief overview on and get any feedback from ACE on the Broadway project. Councilmember Martinez?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. You were talking about earlier, the, some of the business owners aren't sure who you are. Do you guys have ACE business cards?
We don't.
We could probably print something.
Yeah, that would be great. And I know like the website kind of changed for the boards and commissions, so now it doesn't really say what our board is, and it's kind of hidden. So we don't really have like a webpage to really reference either. So we definitely need something like that.
Maybe that's something we could look at. And also, want to mention that our Partners in Energy Program also has a business arm. So we want to make sure that business owners know of potential things that could save them money with lighting and heating and things like that. So maybe when we start getting that really kicked off, we can make sure you guys are included on that.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. And maybe they can come to a meeting and present, too.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else, Councilmember Rietsch? Back to you.
No.
Any further comments or questions for ACE? Anything from your guys' perspective to wrap this up?
Does have anything?
You mentioned the name of this existing business.
Yeah, you did. All right.
Great. Thanks again for coming. I'm encouraged to hear. We've got some kind of new life and new direction with the Boardy, and so thank you all for your efforts in that regard. I know it's been a little bit difficult, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think I'm going to skip over the break, Council, and move us on to Agenda Item Five. This is Budgeting for Community Goals Review. Police Chief John Collins and Court Administrator Tamara Wolf are present to present a strategic view of the 2017 budget's cost drivers, concerns, opportunities, and the expected impact on 2018. Good evening, Chief.
Hello.
Brought some backup, I see.
Just a second.
Hey, Sam.
Right there next to the microphone. I messed this up last time.
Yeah.
So we'll see. Oh. What? Which way? There you go. Yeah, so I had it. Show me how you're... Well, good evening. Let's see, what do we have here? We're here this evening to present, you know, the topic about the police department's budget and what services do we provide and how it impacts the community. I thought it was important that we provide our mission statement to start this conversation off, and that is to promote and ensure a high quality of life and uniquely desirable community identity by providing professional law enforcement services, developing strong collaborative problem-solving strategies with the community, and by treating everyone with fairness, dignity, and respect. One thing I didn't state before we started was that if there are any questions, I guess we can either do it at the end or just cut me off. It makes no difference, so. What, what services do we provide? We provide the Fire Marshal Program. This is a new program for us within the last couple of years. The Fire Marshal Program provides plan reviews and business inspections throughout the community. And the last two, Emergency Management and Community Relations, have been part of that program, but chances are we'll reshuffle that at some point. I think this, it's probably a bit of served in, for example, Emergency Management, we may partner with Arapahoe County to provide that service in a more robust form. And Community Relations will, will no longer be under the Fire Marshal's Program, and we'll figure out where that will be in very short time. Patrol Operations, we provide a 24/7 coverage of the community. Some of the subcomponents of our patrol operations is the, our crime scene investigators, field training officers, master police officers, peer support program, which we just recently instituted, and the SWAT and hostage negotiators. We, we have another division called Special Operations. This houses the Detective Bureau, professional standards, code enforcement, the Impact Team, crime analysis, and the Traffic Enforcement Team.
All that stuff you just read, where is that?
Those are my personal notes. Support Services, Communications, and Records Management. And, let me go further. Why do we provide these services? Well, the Police Department is mandated by city charter, and the, the philosophy that we follow in regards to community goals is to provide a safe and healthy community, as well as maintaining an attractive, engaged, inclusive, and welcoming community with desirable, livable neighborhoods. What are our core services and cost drivers? The Patrol Operations Division is the largest division within the Police Department. As you can see by that pie, the, the total Police Department budget is about $13.7 million. Eighty-seven percent of that is strictly salary and benefits for the entire organization. The Patrol Operations Division comprises 77 percent of the 2017 police, police budget, and that equates to about $10.5 million. As you can see what the core services and cost drivers are, again, it's, it's police operations. You'll see over the last five years that Support Services, Administration, and Code Enforcement have grown minimally as compared to the Patrol Operations Division. 2017 revenue sources, out of the Fire Marshal Program, we, we, we approximate that for 2017, we'll be receiving about $100,000 in plan review fees. General Police Fees, we'll, we'll bring in about $51,000, and our enforcement and training partnership with the Colorado Department of Transportation is roughly $40,000. And that is earmarked for enforcement and training classes for the Police Department and the community. I've also indicated on their asset forfeitures, we are part of the, I have an officer assigned to the DEA Task Force. Part of that assignment is the accrual of asset forfeitures, and most recently, we just received a check in the amount of $61,000 for law enforcement purposes. That number is, you can't, you can't bank on what you're going to get for forfeitures. You get what you get, and, but in this case, it was, it was a nice check to receive.
Before you move on, can I ask about the general police fees?
Sorry?
So, can I ask about the gen...
The general police fees. So remind me what those are, and is there a certain percentage of types that they'd end up being?
Well, our Police Task Officer, example, he does a lot of fingerprinting, and I understand that he brings in about $30,000 a year, and...
And fingerprint printing alone?
Fingerprinting alone. And then, as well as on the tip of my tongue here a second ago, sex offender registration.
Okay.
They pay a fee to, to register with the city, so that equates to roughly $51,000.
Thanks.
2017 progress report. We had the Traffic Enforcement Team on the shelf basically since September of 2016. They were completely shut down and, and due to staffing shortages. The Impact Team was in the same position. We've had two working out of the office since that time, but on any given day, you could have one, you could have two, you could have none, depending on what the staffing situations are on, on patrol. And so, you know, that, those are two of our, you know, primary, you know, special assignments. And without them, that, that kind of hurt for, for our traffic enforcement. You know, we, we utilize the Traffic Enforcement Team for education, engineering, and enforcement, and none of that took place pretty much over the course of the last seven, last six months or so. And the Impact Team, obviously, is, is special to me, but we haven't been as, as effective as we could have. And that's because, again, we had to take people from that assignment and to put them into the patrol ranks. But what I am glad to say is that, and I would give Council some kudos as well, is that back in 2015, we had a discussion about the 75-plus-two, and that was to send two folks to the Training Academy. And we are finally at 75-plus-two. We've recouped from, from what took place in the latter part of 2016, and we're finally stabilized once again. The Traffic Enforcement Team should be up and running here any week now. I have one back. The Impact Team will have three as of May 1st, and we've selected another person to fill that, that role, and he should be back here by September. And so the, the flood of, of issues that we had with, with staffing have, have subsided.
Is the SRO somewhere in here, or did we do away with the SRO?
No, we, the SRO is still here.
Is the school helping pay for that?
No.
It's all us?
Yes. And what I'd also like to add is the Detective Bureau is now staffed with nine detectives. I had an individual assigned to the MAT, Metro Area Auto Theft Task Force, and that was a, a... was a pretty good deal for the city and the police department. But over the course of the last, I would say, seven months as well, the Bureau went through any number of critical events, several homicides, vehicular homicides, spree crimes, you name it, and they were taxed beyond belief, and so what I had to do was pull that guy permanently from that task force. The task force had paid for his salary and benefits and overtime, but we were at such a point that we had to bring him back. And he remains there as we speak. The recent security incident at the city center, it really showed to the city manager's office, and to us, and to the entire city staff, that we had to act swiftly, and we did so. We put, you know, officers here at the Civic Center, and, you know, they're there on police overtime, but the result has been, I guess, beyond expectations. And I guess we will be meeting in May as to where we go from here, and how that staffing continues, and what other efforts we'll make to make this work. One thing I'd like to talk about, let me see if I have it here, is leadership development. What you'll see here over the course of, well, actually, the course of a few days, Commander Watson is sitting here, and not Jeff Sanchez, because Jeff will be retiring following Monday, May 1st, and Sam will take over that role. What we have seen over the course of the last couple of months is the promotion of five new sergeants, as well as two new commanders. We're working diligently to get all these folks up to snuff when it comes to training and whatnot, and I'm kind of proud to say that we also have quite a diverse group as well. You know, as it states on there, we have three of the five sergeants who have been promoted are women, are women or people of color, and I think that's very important for law enforcement Major concerns. As I previously stated, the Detective Bureau has been overtaxed due to major events. We did not lack for that today either, with yet a bank robbery that took most of our staff out of action this afternoon. Thankfully, that person was apprehended, and shortly thereafter, there was a home invasion. So these things go on and on and on, and quite frankly, I don't see any clear skies coming. There's always going to be a critical event that we have to be ready to respond to. Records and communication staff. There have been requests from the district attorney and the county courts, and Joe, you may be familiar with this, it's called discovery. And when you file a homicide case, state law dictates, according to the DA, that you submit your evidence within, everything, within 21 days, and that is taxing. They have taken it to the nth degree to where if we write a careless driving ticket, our dispatch supervisors are asked to provide CAD notes, recordings of police officer traffic on the air, and it has gotten to the point where we can no longer provide this information to them, and I've explained that to Mr. Brockler, and he's looking to try to figure out a way how to resolve this. But we, our records staff, again, is overtaxed. We're trying to figure out, to no avail, how to provide that service when we're at a point right now where I think we've hit the wall on it. And then finally, excuse me, a little bit about our dispatchers and dispatch center. We currently have about 10 dispatchers. We have 10 dispatchers and two supervisors. In a perfect world, that number works perfectly when they have 10 dispatchers. When you go down to nine or eight, which is where we're currently at, the only recourse that we have is to pay overtime, to change schedules and whatnot. And for those of you who have visited the center, know fully well just how stressful that job can be, and I would put it almost on the same line as that of a police officer. Last year, Commander Fender provided to me the number of 3,035 hours that we paid out in the amount of $67,000 to cover those overtime costs. And so, as you can see, it's, you know, the, those are the staffing issues. It just doesn't touch patrol. It touches the support groups as well, and we work diligently each and every day to try to figure out how to overcome that, and that's by doing some very aggressive hiring and recruiting, so.
How does this compare to 2017?
I'm sorry?
How does it compare to 2017, I mean, 2015? This is 2016.
You know, it's, you know, the dispatch numbers? I don't have that number offhand, but I know historically, and Tim Engler's here, he can also explain, there'll be a year where we'll have, it'll just flow fluidly, and there won't be any issues. One year, we were in the black by about $20,000, I believe. Most of the time, we are not. Most of the time, we're under because people call in sick, you know, their extended illnesses, or if somebody leaves to go to a different, you know, a different city, let's say. Just that period of time will put us right into overtime, so, to give you a 2015 number, I don't have that, but I could probably give that to you, you know, probably this week if need be, on a council request, if you'd like.
This just seems really high, doesn't it? Do you remember it being this high?
No, you know, I think Chief's probably right, though. It probably, you know, wanes and flows, you know, based on staffing levels, and I don't have my arms around how, where that's really at, or more than she does.
Yeah, they went over about $13,000. I looked at that number last week, and 13, it went over the line out of my count for overtime, so there was quite a bit of work done in overtime last year. And again, that includes the supervisors, which they have to step in as a dispatcher, and so, they're not able to do their job as a supervisor because they're too busy dispatching calls. And there again, it's just an example of where we're at with our overall staffing.
I agree. It is kind of concerning, though, and as that overtime number starts to approach what an FTE would be, then we sort of need to start to reevaluate, and it's starting to creep that way based on the 67.
And we've had that discussion.
Sure.
And, which is where, you know, when I conclude, is where I think we, as a group, you know, kind of, you know, partner to kind of figure out a strategy as to where we go, you know, from here. Chief Collins?
Barantine, did you have a question, too? I think we got one more question. Did you have something, Councilmember Barantine?
You said earlier that your staffing is stable at this time.
As stable as can be, yes.
Is it, okay. It's stable, and then you've gone into a lot of discussion about how it's not stable, so I need to kind of get an idea if you go, well, it'll never be, like, really stable, so then I'm confused about the, kind of, the verbiage of it, but-
Here's where, I'm sorry.
On the 10 or 12, you said, so there's 12 dispatchers.
10, well, 10 dispatchers, two supervisors.
Making a total of 12?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. And then, it wouldn't be overtime when the supervisors are filling in. I mean, that's kind of probably part of their job as well, is that they should fill in if there's, if something happens, somebody doesn't come in, they have a car accident on the way in, that way, that your staff, so they would have been working anyway, so that shouldn't have done it. Do you know how much overtime you have so far this year?
No, I can get that for you. We had numbers, and I can provide those to you as well, as to where the dispatch supervisors did exactly as what you're describing. And then they worked their 40 hours plus overtime to cover the loss of those that could not.
Well, you would think, I mean, part of a supervisor's job would be to cover that piece of it, so I'm not sure that's a management decision that you're making on there, but the, what was I gonna, the, you said you were only at nine dispatchers right now. How long has it been that way?
Vance, would you know that answer?
And is that nine, including the two supervisors?
It's actually, we're down, the dispatch numbers are-
Vance, you want to come out to the microphone?
Come to the table.
Thank you, sir.
Absolutely. So, the dispatch numbers are actually 10 dispatchers. There's a very clear delineation between dispatch and supervisors. The dispatchers' numbers are 10. What we've done since October of last year, we lost an employee to another agency, and at that point, that took us down to eight dispatchers. So we've been low for approximately seven months, eight months, and we've been aggressively trying to find those positions to hire them.
What you just said was that you had 10 dispatchers, you lost one to another agency, and that brought you down to eight.
Right, so prior to that, we had one vacancy prior to October, prior to when I took over the division.
Okay, so since October, you've had a vacancy and not been able to fill that?
Correct, we've had two vacancies since October.
Okay, and then when did the, both of them happened in October?
The first one just before October, the second one in October. So we've had two vacancies since the fourth quarter of 2016.
Both of them since October. Okay, and then you said you were kind of hiring and recruiting aggressively, but since October doesn't seem like real aggressive, but-
We have lost approximately 20 people through background investigations that couldn't pass our background investigation, and we've been through, I want to say this is our third hiring process since that point, and we have two people right now that we're, one has a conditional offer out, and the other one is in backgrounds.
And is this a similar problem that other dispatches, agencies are having, or?
Throughout the country, in law enforcement in general, yeah, with passing background investigations.
And are we analyzing maybe why we're having that problem, or how we can address that?
I'm working with human resources on that as well, yes.
Okay, and then, the, if you could get the numbers for where we're at right now with the overtime, because we don't want it to just happen to us, we want to make sure we're managing that as we're going along, because we can't be proactive if we just let it happen to us and we're talking about it next year for, that it's already come and gone. What happened with the, you said it was stable, but I thought we still had two, does that include the two employees that are employee, that are off, being terminated, that you can't fill those spots until they're resolved?
Are you talking about patrol now, or?
The two women officers. Do you have more employees that are suing?
No.
Oh, okay, then I guess those, I only knew of two, and that's what I was referring to.
Oh, no, we had, we had any number of officers who were out. We had those two. We had two officers who had long-term medical issues, one who effectively retires today. You're smiling, am I not answering your question?
I just asked, are the two employees that had filed suit on their termination, have those been resolved?
The-
Because you said you couldn't hire to replace them until that was resolved. That was my question.
Okay, the, the one individual who was terminated first, lost her appeal to the city, and that allowed us to go ahead and hire her replacement. The second one has, we can't do anything with her, although the city manager has allowed me to replace her based upon the evidence in that case. And so, her case is still in limbo. She's in criminal court right now, and her appeal is awaiting the outcome of that, of those criminal proceedings.
Okay, because we were told before that we couldn't replace them until we had, until it was resolved, so if that, if there's other ways to address that issue, so neither one of those are a problem anymore?
No, no.
Okay, and then what is, how is the retention rate going, because you said that that was part of the problem in hiring and doing that, and?
We're doing fine, you know. You know, when I came here last September, you know, we go through these periods in time where you lose personnel, and when you're down five or six of those folks in the patrol ranks, it has its effects. In October of last year, it became painfully obvious that this is more of a norm now than it would be just an isolated incident. Officers getting hurt has become very routine, and it's just due to the nature of the job. And last year, when we moved folks out of the Traffic Bureau, two became disenchanted because they finally made it to a special assignment and had to go back to the street. And so, they found greener pastures in another larger agency. And, you know, those things you can't prevent, and that was part of our loss as well. And we had an employee who was on maternity leave who didn't inform us until the last moment that she was not coming back. And so, all those things hit all at once and put us in a bad way. But as of, let's say, Monday, we are back to our authorized strength plus two. And so, what we experienced last October has now come to an end.
Okay, and then, I just had a question on the forfeiture amount that the, I mean, the white paper that the Budget Advisory Committee did and the kind of presentation what we're hearing here, the information we're hearing here now, is a lot different. And so, I'm just kind of curious where they got that disconnect, because they said that they had met with you guys, and there was a huge staffing problem, they'd like to see that come up, that there was money in there, they had these revenue sources coming in, so maybe you could address that.
Oh, yeah, without a doubt. I told them what our staffing situation was, and that's when I came to the realization that it is what it is. It's the norm. Now, you mentioned about money and forfeiture. I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Did you not, did they share that white paper with you?
They shared-
I'm sorry, if you didn't have a chance to see it.
No, I did get to see it to proof it, and I made a number of corrections and sent it back, but I did not see the final document, and so there.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Barantine?
No.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates.
You'd made mention that on the records that you have to turn over with the Arapau County Courts and so on, it's gotten to the point where there's a lot of that coming across, where they want to have the recording and all of that stuff. How does other, how does other police departments deal with that? Do they have more staff, or is there software, or?
Well, there is no software. This is human, it's just labor-intensive.
Okay.
There, our meeting with the DA was about two weeks ago, and there are agencies that were in the same boat as us, and were, you know, they jumped right on board when I raised the issue. There are some agencies that have the luxury of having more, you know, a lot more administrative staff, and there they can cover that. And so, and that's kind of the point I was bringing out, is that we have a set number of administrative staff, and the burden placed on them by the district attorney alone is incredibly tough to meet their, to meet their goals and objectives.
You, Councilmember Russell?
Actually, my first question is really just about clarification. When you said that you have 10 dispatchers and two, and then we have eight, do we have 10, or do we have eight?
We have eight right now, correct?
And two supervisors.
Probably 10, including the supervisors.
No, eight, eight dispatchers and two supervisors. We have two in the hopper. I've offered a, I've made a conditional job offer to one gal that Commander Fender just explained to Councilmember Barantine, and we have one that we're hoping to hire. That would get us back to 10.
That, okay, okay. I just wanted to make sure. And if we could get the list of all of the things that you were reading off under the patrol operations, and also under special operations, the things that we have, that would be helpful.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
Turn it back over to you, Chief.
Let me see where I was at.
Yeah, sorry.
Opportunities.
I have two officers, one assigned to the, as I mentioned, the DEA Task Force Group One, as well as, well, actually, two, sergeant and a investigator with the Arapau County Narcotics Team. Both of these assignments provide career development, obviously. It provides proactive law enforcement for our community. There is forfeiture funding available through the participation with the Drug Enforcement Administration, and it covers a heck of a lot of work that we could not do otherwise without that participation in these drug investigative agencies. Policy considerations. One thing that we all recognize is that, if you would hit that button, that we're currently trying to manage the size of the police department in a growing- trying to manage the size of the police department in a growing community, wherever we look around now, we're not growing outwards, we're growing upwards. And, and that's the concern that members of my organization have expressed to me. And with that comes a number of, you know, as we see growth, we also see, you know, sometimes an increase in, in criminal activity, especially that which is around this particular area, this, 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 the city center and, and the outlying business community. You know, as, as we have back in 2015, we discussed the, the creation of a new district, and, and we've, we've kind of figured out how to make that work if, if someday we get to that point. The next topic is a shared common CAD, I'm very excited about this, this was spearheaded by the Rappel County Sheriff's Office. And what that means is, you know, much like the fire department, it's like with South Metro, instead of every, every agency paying well over two-hundred-and-twenty-five, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to have their own CAD, the Sheriff's Office has, has essentially paid for a CAD that we will all share in. Currently, I have it down here, I, our inclusion in this group, which is the Eighteenth Judicial District, I have there is approximately forty thousand. That number is actually now twenty-eight thousand. And where does that money come from? It does not come from the police budget or from the city, it comes from what we call an Agency Operations Fund. That's provided to us by the E-911 Authority, and, and with that, you know, they've given us permission to pay those licensees, licensing fees through that fund. So it's kind of a win-win deal for us all the way around. And then one concern that I wanted to include in this presentation is, is the pending loss of our records management system. I received a, information technology works almost daily on our, on our records management system, it's about twenty years old, and probably at some point in time needs to be replaced. And IT has been on top of that, but recently we discovered that the vendor is in some very serious financial issues. The possibility of them going, going bankrupt is, is very realistic. The cost to replace the records management system would be about seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. And I've, I've mentioned this to the city manager, and, and, you know, how does the city go about paying for something like this that wasn't anticipated? Well, we're going through a, the building of a new police building, and this is just my thoughts, and so just bear with me. But we own the, the Fox Street Buildings across the street from the police building. And originally, we paid six-hundred thousand in forfeiture funds to buy those two buildings. My understanding is that those buildings are now worth anywhere from seven-hundred to nine-hundred thousand. And so with the new building, we move everybody under one roof, and so what do we do with that, the Fox Street Buildings? And the math is simple for me, you sell the buildings, you buy a new records management system, and because you can only use that money for, for law enforcement purposes, it was forfeiture funds that was originally received, and so even when you get the money back after the sale of the property, it still has to be used for law enforcement purposes. A records management system certainly would fit the bill for that. And, you know, the other, the other component of that is, is whether or not with that, I'm not sure, and correct me if I'm wrong, if it's a discretionary fund and, and the bond for the new police building, if, if there's enough money in there to cover, you know, they talk about, you know, police capital. To me, that's two logical sources, now others may say it's not logical, but for, you know, especially the real estate issue, I think that's a, you know, you can keep it for storage, or you can sell it and buy a new records management system, so that's where I'm at on that one.
Questions? Councilmember Martinez?
I have a question on the records management system, so you're currently, we're, we're using another vendor for this, and is this estimated seven-twenty-five to find another vendor that would provide the same solution, or...
What, we still have Logisys, you know, they're still on live support, and, but we have to be ready for when they go, and I've, I've talked to Commander Fender about this, and it's too premature, but when, you know, Tritech will be the vendor for the shared CAD. It makes perfect sense to me that you go with Tritech for their records management system, they have a records management, records management system as well. And so, to me, that's where we probably should lean, you know, if this, if this departure of Logisys ever takes place. Vance, do you have anything more to add to that?
Just that, the, the common CAD system, the, the vendor for that common CAD system is a company called Tritech, and Tritech is also, I would say, a very large player in the world of, of records management, and so their record management system actually works, I was gonna say flawlessly, but it's IT, it's supposed to work hand-in-hand with their CAD system. And so our, our potential for having interface issues and communications issues between the two systems, since they would both be Tritech, would be minimal, is what I'm understanding, so, because they're supposed to be integrated.
Okay.
So that's why we're looking at, at the Tritech RMS system, if we have to go down that road.
Okay, that's helpful. And then also, I know anytime moved to a, a big system change, there's obviously gonna be training and time duration it takes to kind of migrate over to that, what do you anticipate for that, a year, two years?
For the CAD system itself?
To switch over to the records management system?
So there'd be two pieces, the CAD system that's coming in, in the fourth quarter of this year, we already have the money through the E-911 Authority to get the training for the officers and the dispatchers to use the computer aid to dispatch a portion of Tritech. So that rollout's gonna roll out full-time, they're saying fourth quarter of this year, and we'll, and we'll put that training in, in place at that point. The same thing will happen with whatever vendor we choose for a record management system, and that will be rolled into the cost of that contract with training from the vendor, and then in-service training for the officers, for our records folks, and also for dispatch.
So do you have any estimated idea of duration that that might take? I know those things take a long time.
We, it definitely would not take a year, because if we switched to a different vendor for their record management system, we would have to be up and running in a matter of weeks. So it would...
So we should probably get on that as soon as possible.
It would be a matter of weeks, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big deal, to switch systems.
It is.
So I just wanna get an idea of what transition time that would take. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell, did you have something?
Actually, I do have a couple of questions, because I didn't necessarily see this addressed in here, although you, you talked about this a little bit, that we have seen what happens when the police presence has been here at city center. It's not only city center that has that problem, it is across the city. And I just can't tell you, in meeting with some of the business owners the end of last week, it's huge. And we either have to change how we're doing things, and we need to figure this out, because, and I don't see how that's gonna be addressed, and I think this is very important for us to address, because I think that Jill Wilson was talking about this a couple of years ago, and it's been my issue since I've got on council, we need to address the infrastructure, and I believe safety is one of the biggest issues. So I want to make sure that we're getting the information we need and changing the way we're doing things. If we have to cut back in some areas, fine, but we've got to address these other issues.
Yeah, that's a very good point, and, and, you know, we, we kind of figured that maybe this redistricting discussion would come up. Part of that is, let's say theoretically, you have the appropriate number of, of officers assigned, let's say to start with, here in the city center district, you know, 204. And that would go from essentially Dartmouth to Hampden, Santa Fe to, to Broadway, to cover all those areas within. And you start having an effect there, we have a map that, we couldn't provide it tonight, we do have it here, we couldn't provide it last Thursday because the city, there was a server down or something, and so we couldn't get that to you in time. So I, I guess you can shoot, you know, I think it's part of the transparency questions that, that come up. But it shows throughout the city where your hotspots are, and, and that's, those are the areas that we need to address, and I, I think you're spot-on, as to, you know, we're talking almost a mini ComStat approach to, to, to crime and disorder, that was very successful in New York City, but they had the resources to do it. We would have to do it on a much smaller scale, but what you've seen here, just as an example for city center, is a good example of throwing your resources at something and making that problem essentially go away or, or get tremendously diminished. Are you done there? No, because then that problem may move further throughout the city, you may have other unrelated issues, like in your district, we have Broadway and Bellevue, for example, we have areas in District One that, that are showing that real hotspot. And so we have to figure out a way to get resources to those spots for a longer period of time and to knock it out. And, and then you need to be resilient and, and expect it to show up somewhere else, and then go after it again and again until, you know, theoretically you, you move it out.
Theoretically, I want to deal with this issue citywide, if we have to cut expenses other places to deal with this, I, I think that we can't just deal with it here and there, because then it just migrates around the city. I, I think it's very important that we figure out how to deal with this.
Thank you, Councilmember Barrantine.
You said in the example to her, answering her question, you know, let's say we had, we were up to staffing, that we had the adequate number of officers, but you just told us you did. And so if it's a matter of kind of going back, if you have the number of staffing that you wanted plus two, then it becomes an issue of how you're managing those people's time and where you're, you're putting them, and so I think we would kind of like to see a little bit more of how you're gonna manage that come back in. One of the questions I had, since we had the meeting on the issue that happened with city center, in an executive session, I was kind of dismayed to hear that when Scott Gilbert came and said that people were being pretty open with the public about that funding was gonna go away for this building in May, and I had gotten the impression that there was a little bit of effort to try and keep some of that a little bit more quiet on exactly the steps that we were taking with city center, so I was kind of dismayed to find out that that was just so open and out there, because it seemed like, well, we might be advertising to people to just come back in. So I know we're gonna have, I know we're gonna have that discussion on, on bringing that in. I agree with her that the, there is also a concern when a member of the public comes in and is very complimentary of the efforts that we're taking for the situation that happened here at city center, and then wanting to know what, what are they doing for my neighborhood that they're having, that they're having problems, and they're not seeing that neighborhood policing coming forth and being effective, which neighborhood policing was effective here. So if we could have a little bit more information on your management plan for that, I don't, I'm not trying to put you on the spot to talk about that tonight, but now that you're at the appropriate amount of staffing that you believe that you have for officers, if we could get that kind of issue. And if you could also, that kind of issue addressed, I should finish my sentence, I apologize. And then to have something like this seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars brought up in one sentence in a presentation and a PowerPoint tonight is kind of difficult to deal with. I mean, just the information that you were saying, giving us tonight, we need to have that more written down as a process, as a plan, what we're gonna do, how we're assessing this, so that we can make a decision. Otherwise, in a couple of months, somebody just goes, that got brought up at the budget thing, and so we're, we're spending this kind of money, and I would like to have that made available to us so that we could review it and get that information and discuss this a little bit more in depth that...
You know, I thoroughly agree. I didn't think it was the purpose of this meeting to lay out the entire process of what, how we're gonna attack the RMS problem.
Mm-hmm.
But I thought it was important that you know tonight that there is a problem. And, and then secondly, you know, I mentioned the creation of a new district, what we mentioned to you back in 2015 was that, you know, where we're at staffing level-wise, seventy-five plus two gets us back to where we should be, it doesn't get us to where we create that district, it just doesn't. And Sam can explain to you how those numbers work, we would have to add four more positions to make that, that new district work, work ideally.
And I'd like to see that information written out a little bit more, because we keep hearing about that, from, from when Jill Wilson made her, and I was in the audience...
It was handed to you back in 2015.
When Jill Wilson brought that issue up and that she wanted more officers, and then when you presented at the budget meeting that year, you said, no, we don't need them, we're, we're fine. Then when we did budget, budgeting last year, and it came up again that maybe we need more officers if there's a problem, because a new district doesn't make this city bigger, it just divides it up more. So if we can properly police this community with seventy-five plus two, then I need to see why we would need the additional officers, just because the city is divided up different. And I don't want to get anecdotal things tonight, I'm not trying to put somebody on the spot, but it keeps getting brought up without the information being brought to us.
Well, I'll only repeat, yeah, I'll only repeat what, what I had just said, was that...
Guys, if you don't mind, I'd like...
That was provided to you back in 2015, and I'd be more than glad to give that to you.
I'll, I'll finish my question so that you can have all the information. Then again, when the budget was brought up last year, we heard that we needed more officers, but then when we ended up, push came to shove, you said, no, you didn't. And now, once again, we're going through this budget, and you're saying, after the presentation from the Budget Advisory Committee and their white paper, that we need up to eighty officers, and that we've got this other funding going, and then we get pushed back again to where you're presenting and saying, no, we don't, the staffing is where we're gonna, you don't have a staffing issue, so...
Do you want me to respond to this, or is that just a statement? I...
Well, I'm, I'm just confused that if you guys could bring this information forward, if we do need another district, then bring information that's, that's written down so that we have it in our packet prior to the meeting, so that we can take a look at it, analyze it, and have some solid information and figures, rather than just doing it anecdotally while you're sitting here.
Okay.
Thank you. Manager Teck has been patient, wants to get in on this conversation.
Just, just quickly, counsel, as a reminder, the, this, the topic of the software was actually raised last year as an item of concern in the 2016 going into 2017, and so this is something that has been analyzed. This company that's been referred to has been in, in some trouble, and we have been watching this closely, we're obviously trying to get the most out of we can of this asset, because it is a fixed asset that the city has owned, and we're on, on top of that. So I don't want anybody to think that this is the first time this has been mentioned, and we apologize if, if it feels like it has, but that, that was discussed in the 2016 process.
Then to Amy, the Councilmember Martinez's question, if we could just get a little bit more information about what the seven-twenty-five would actually...
Sure.
What that cost is actually going for and what it would be needed for, that would help. And if we would be recouping any cost from the previous contract, that apparently we've known these people were in trouble for a year, are we gonna be losing any money, are we gonna be on that contract, are they gonna be fulfilling whatever that seven-twenty-five is paying for, are we gonna lose any money that we gave them? And so if we could have a breakdown of that, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you, I'd like to move on to Mr. Robinson, and then Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to address really quickly the comment that Councilmember Barrantine had about the executive session. I, the first time it was said in our normal meeting, it gave me some concern, and so I reviewed the, the, what the citizen said once more, and I, I do want to assure you all that no one violated our executive session rules, in that after hearing what our citizen said, he talked to the police officer, and the police officer is the one who advised him that they're stopping in May. The only reason that they know that is because the police officers have to sign up for these, and so when they see the sign-up stops in May, they, they, they take that for what it is. And so I wanted to assure all of you all that there is nobody in this room, including myself or anyone else on the administration, who's had violated the executive session laws.
I want to make...
Thank you, right now, we're not gonna come back to you, Councilmember Barrantine.
I did not, I did not accuse anybody of that.
Councilmember Barrantine, please stop talking, you're out of order, ma'am. We're gonna move on to Councilmember Olson.
Okay.
First of all, I want to thank you for, for this report, and it's, I realize it's a generalized report, and that's what it was meant for tonight, so I appreciate that. I wanted to give you a chance, chief, though, to respond if, if... I wanted to give you a chance, Chief, though, to respond if you were cut off just now in responding to some of the questions that Councilmember Berentine brought up. And then I have two questions. But I mean, I think there were some questions that you were ready to ask or something to say, but if not, it's fine, we can move on.
I don't know.
Okay.
Quite frankly, where, I mean, Councilmember Berentine said quite a bit, and I don't know what to respond to, quite frankly. So if you'd like to ask those questions, perhaps that will generate some thoughts on the report.
Sure. I wanted to know on the redistricting, because we have talked about it from time to time, and I know it's going to take some things. Do you have a list of criteria that you've sort of developed where there'll be a tipping point, whether it's around the number of residents we now have in Englewood, given the, the growth in apartments, or other kinds of things, and how much money? I mean, do you have some kind of metrics that you're using for that?
It's not so much a, a trigger point, as we all know, you know...
No pun intended.
Through, uh... Through, uh, the community development updates, you see the city growing, there's a lot of development, which is great, and the, and the impact that's, that's creating for law enforcement is also great. The multifamily housing units are probably the, the prime example, the increase in traffic that's associated with them, that's all an impact. So the, the status quo where we're at that we talk about as far as staffing, right now, like the chief mentioned, we are at the, at our authorized strength, keeping in mind that four of those part, four of those officers, I'm sorry, three of them just entered training today. And it'll take 17 weeks for them, you know, four, over four months for them to complete their training and actually fill a, fill a position on the schedule. So the, the, the status quo, even when they're out of training, is based on prior to this development and prior to things changing for the need of more police officers. So when we talk about minimum staffing that we have on, on patrol, on police, that's, that's a minimum where we're effective at being reactive, at responding to calls for service, 911 calls, going to accidents, we're effective there. But it really limits our ability to be proactive. So when I hear things about safety, when I hear, we hear things about improving security and, and law enforcement presence in the, in the business districts, that's our ability to be proactive. When we, we talk about the, the security here at the Civic Center and in the entire City Center area, we need to be proactive. So by redistricting, that does a couple of things. One is that it dedicates an officer to this City Center specific area, which is extremely important for the city, keeping businesses here, enticing new businesses, providing a safe, secure environment for, for residents and, and business owners. What it also does is, is carves out an area of the city right now that's a hotspot, like the chief mentioned, which is, accounts for a tremendously large, disproportionately large number of calls for service. And by, by carving that out and assigning an officer 24 hours, seven days a week, specific to this area, it reduces the calls in other parts and, and our three other police districts, which gives those officers more time to be, to be proactive. And whether it's at the, at the business corridors or other hotspot areas and other, other parts of the, of the district. So in order to do that, like the chief mentioned, and increasing our staffing on patrol by four, it would also give us the ability to increase that minimum staffing on day shift and on swing shift, the afternoon into, into evening shift by one officer. So the officers have more time to be proactive. So we're still, still responding to 911 calls, still, still responding to calls for service, but it gives them more unobligated or free time to dedicate at the problem areas.
So I think what I, what I'd love to see, and maybe this is what Councilmember Berentine was trying to get at too, is, is having some set of criteria. I mean, it's great that we're at 75. It's the first time we've been there for a very, very long time, right? We're finally at the capacity you were hoping for. You've got a couple in the chute still, but we need to be beyond that. So what is it going to be and what's our process to get there? So that is it, is it 2018 budget? Are we going to try and get there then? Is it 2019? Do we add two and then keep being really rigorous at this? But it seems like there has to be some sort of like a matrix of, okay, this number of people, these are the kind of numbers of crimes, we know these are the hotspots that are developing, but I know it's not a perfect science. It's like whack-a-mole a lot, but...
I think the, the, you're right. It's hard to, again, I'm using the word trigger points. It's hard to say, you know, if our response, if our response time is increased to four minutes for emergencies and seven, you know, then we need to add more people. That's, that's really hard to do because there's, there's, there's natures of calls, the natures of calls are increasing, there's a lot of calls, especially in the, it used to be in the late afternoon and evenings that would require two or three officers to respond to, not just one. You know, shoplifter, you can handle with, with one officer, a disturbance, bank robbery, today we had 12, 14 people out there responding to that. The types and nature of calls are, are changing.
Yeah.
What used to be evening and nighttime calls are now occurring during the middle of the day.
What I'm worried about is that we won't, we won't get there if we don't have some process that we've outlined with you so that we can get you where you need to be. And that's what your second one here on the recap is about, future staffing levels and developing strategies for that, and how can we help you with that? It sounds like you want us to be developing those with you, so how will we go about that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I'll just say one thing, and I, and, you know, back in, you know, I think it was August 29th of last year, that we did our council presentations, and, and we were managing yet again, you know, our staffing levels. And it was becoming somewhat obvious that, you know, it's par for the course. And then when, when the, when the folks from the Budget Advisory Committee asked to, you know, for me to come and visit with them in the middle of October, I think it was October 25th, the, you know, we were, we were done. I mean, we, you know, our, our staffing levels were in the tank. And, and, and so I chose to talk to them rather bluntly, because quite frankly, you know, the, it's, it's become the norm. Right when, and I, knock on wood, as soon as I get back to the office tomorrow, and I, and I pray to God it's not the case, but this is what was happening in 16. Did you hear, this person is now wild for two or three weeks with an angina, and it's, and it, and it just doesn't stop. And, and so that's where I, that's where I was at in October, is that, you know, you appreciate what you have, yet you try, you know, finally at a certain point, you say, you know what, you know, it is what it is. And so, and, and that's where, that's where I was at in October. What I'm saying here is, is that the second bullet point is, is, and I think Lorette is on track, is that we need to discuss these things more as partners and, and, and developing a strategy. You know, we can't do this tonight. We can't just write a check for $280,000, but how do we go about doing it? And again, you all mentioned my other, my peers and their other departments. They have needs as well, but, you know, I, my job is to, is to knock, knock crime out of the ballpark. And, you know, I'm real proud of what they do, the cops and, you know, they, the philosophy that we have taken is spend as much time as you want on a crime problem, and, and, because this way we won't have to go back to it. And, and, and so I give them a great deal of credit. And, you know, we can't help, you know, we can't, those that cross our border, that come to do our, you know, our community harm, I have no control over that. But the control that I do have is to track them down and throw them in jail, and that's my commitment to, to the city. And I think we do pretty good at that. And I'd like to knock the, the arrest numbers down because it shows that we've moved that problem out of the city and made it somebody else's problem. But we can only do that by, by conversation and not just in one night, and then come back a year later and say, well, what the heck happened? And do it over a period of time and say, how do we go about this strategically so we do it responsibly, you know, fiscally, and, and meet the goals as, as, as Ms. Russell is stating? This isn't the only problem that I want to knock out of the ballpark. I want to, you know, go down to District Three and, and figure out why, you know, one particular area is so red, and we do know why, and then address that. But, you know, you know, just let's work together to try to figure that out. And it ain't going to get solved tonight, I guarantee you that, so...
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to make a few comments, maybe ask a few questions. Thank you for the presentation. I thought this was a great beginning to a conversation, I think, as you're pointing out. You know, I think that we've identified some issues that I think need some discussion and how we're going to kind of get there. Obviously, you're hearing, I think, a lot of comments from council saying, hey, I think we need a recommendation about staffing levels, right? And so how are we going to deal with, you know, the overtime issues, be it a new district with City Center security issues as well as dispatch? And, you know, perhaps if we get a recommendation along with some numbers and some options that council can kind of mull over, I think that would be helpful. I guess I'm just wondering when that next step might happen. I know the chief suggested May. You know, I don't think we have them back on our agenda in May. Perhaps June might be a more reasonable timeline to have this next discussion regarding staffing, police staffing issues. Chief, do you think that makes sense?
Yeah, I have one week in June that I won't be here, and so I better be here.
Okay, so we won't, we won't schedule it that week, sir, so we can have the benefit of having you here. Mr. Keck, do you have anything to add as far as, you know, do you think June might be a reasonable time, knowing that council's probably going to want to continue this conversation regarding staffing in a timely manner?
Yeah, absolutely. I think there, this, this is obviously one of the key issues that face in the community and something that we need to address. So we could easily bring it back either June 5th or then 12th.
Well, is that enough time?
And I think, again, if we give some sort of recommendation...
It's not the 5th.
Okay.
All right, the 12th.
Thank you for that. But, you know, again, I think if we get an official recommendation from the chief as well as some alternatives, saying, hey, if you don't like my recommendation, try alternative B, and here's what that funding mechanism looks like, as we begin to have our more deeper dives with other departments, we can sort of know, you know, what we might need to set aside in order to make something like that happen. You know, I think hearing that we need, you know, for example, four new officers for a district, sort of helpful for councils, a policymaker, to have in their mind a placeholder of, if I really want to advocate for that, how much money do I need and how much, you know, funding will I need to be able to find in order to be able to get there? Chief, did you have anything to add on that?
The, the only other thing too is, is that now that I have my impact team back, the, we used to use them for a lot of the disorder issues throughout the community, you know, the neighborhood squabbles, so to speak. I've got them more of the not working hotspots. And now that I've got three of them back, I'll, I'll be sure to utilize them as well. And, you know, I, I don't want to be blamed for not using the resources that I have. And, and so that'll be part of the equation. And, and like I said, you know, I don't, I didn't expect to come in here tonight and say, I need four, four people, and how are we going to do it? Just to plant the seed, and how do we get there? You may tell me we can't. And if you do, then I've got to figure out, how do you, you know, do I take out every special assignment that I have and put them in patrol? To me, it's ludicrous, because I, my turnover rate would be horrible, because I'm not offering any, any future for the guys and the women. And so, you know, those are the things that I have to consider. I mean, I, somebody may think that, but it just, it doesn't make any sense to me.
I appreciate that statement. I think, you know, in my mind, the, you know, goal of a lot of these initial meetings with the departments is to really issue spot, and I think you've done a relatively good job of pointing out what are the issues that we really need to consider for this cycle, not necessarily to resolve all of those in the study session, so I appreciate that. You know, the one thing, thinking out loud about the scheduling in June is the, the City Center security issue in May. Do we need to touch base prior to then, Mr. Keck? Or do you feel like you need council direction? Or is that something you can handle administratively until June 12th?
We'll do the best that we can, Mayor. I think that we are dealing with limited resources, and I think that, given the, the question and the point, I think, that was raised by Councilmember Russell, where she really sees it as a zero-sum game, since we're not adding in any new revenues, how are we going to figure out where the cuts are going to come to help fund that? We'll come with some ideas and some thoughts on, on how that could work by looking at maybe some underutilized programs in the program, you know, the parity-based budgeting format to, to bring back some results.
So in your mind, you don't necessarily think you need direction prior to June 12th?
I don't think so. I think we'll, we'll work through that and then come back with a plan on the 12th.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to ask real briefly about the 21-day discovery issue. Is that something that other departments are struggling with as well, sort of county-wide? You know, it's nice to hear, you know, our district attorneys sort of willing to potentially help us find a solution county-wide. Is that something that all of them are dealing with?
Yeah, and, and like I said, the scenario I gave you is that we fully understand a homicide case or a high-profile felony case. But when you stop somebody for a careless driving ticket, you hand them a ticket, and you've got to spend four to six hours on, on copying tapes and dispatch notes, and to me, it's ludicrous. You know, it, you know, it's not criminal justice serving its purpose. And so, but when you, when you do it with everything that we do, you can see why these people are busy. And I just ask them to stop it, but I don't think they will. But I, I've asked for some, for some pain pills or something to get us through this, so...
Thank you for that. And so perhaps, do you think by June, we might have some idea of what our department and Mr. Brockler were able to talk about? Or maybe not by then?
He's running for governor. He's very hard to...
He's still got a job to do, is what I know.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, what, in June, what I, what I can tell you is that I'd like to bring that, a PowerPoint presentation to you in regards to the, we just created these maps through a GIS guy in, in the city, and he did a fabulous job with it. And it shows you exactly what's going on in the city in regards to, you know, calls for service. I want to provide that to you, and, and again, the, the salary numbers and all those things for folks that, that are out there that are, you know, being considered for replay, you know, for additional folks, whatever. And so I will get you as much information as I can. I hope it's not too much, but I don't want to be accused of not giving you enough.
It won't be.
So, I know.
Thank you. You know, just on the records management system, is it fairly clear that our bond initiative allows for funding of something like this? Or is that something we need to vet with the city attorney's office? How do we feel about that? And I know this is a policy discussion for council to have that we have not had, so I'm not trying to initiate that conversation tonight. I just want to be clear of whether or not we have a legal reading of that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, the, the resolution or the ordinance, excuse me, that authorized the bond in the first place, it created the ballot language created by Bond Counsel Tom Pels, he indicated that not only was it for the capital infrastructure for the building, but it also clearly enunciated it could be used for FFNE and other equipment that might aid in public safety. And so, given that, we've also gone back to talk to Mr. Pels, who wrote that. He believes that it would cover the cost of, of, you know, some things were questioned last week about fixed assets, or something that's depreciating. Well, the building depreciates too, but beyond that, it would be rolling stock, it could be software. But we will also look at other means of providing that records management system, not dissimilar to what we're doing right now with respect to ERP, rather than hosting it here. Is there a SaaS solution, software as a service? Could it be in a cloud, where we don't have to own it? And if that's the case, that might reduce our costs. But we'll look at other options. I think what's been given to you tonight is a, if you were to buy it off the shelf today, what's an RMS going to cost? There it is.
Will we have something a little more nailed down by the June date, do you think?
Absolutely, because if we're going to be budgeting for it, we need to know what it's going to cost us.
Thank you. You know, finally, I just wanted to end on some comments regarding our Fox Street buildings. I think Chief had mentioned a little bit about, hey, you know, it's kind of uncertain what the future is with some of those assets. I think those aren't the only assets around town that we need to think about, you know, what is the long-term use of those? And honestly, I'd advocate for, the same thing I advocate for all the time, which is long-term leasing of those properties. And perhaps, you know, the council should start to chew on whether that's something we should handle in-house, or if this is something we should put on RFP for broker representation for, because I'm, you know, I'm wondering, you know, maybe Mr. Keck, in-house, you know, do you feel like you're managing those properties, or do you feel like we need to go for a RFP?
And listen, I'm, I'm as big a capitalist pig as you are, and I think that we want to look at ways in which we can be entrepreneurial with our assets. And, you know, we've got, Service Center has additional land, we've got other places, and so I don't think we're doing as well as we could with marketing those and being more aggressive. We lost the Cherry Hills deal, they decided to go to Sheridan. But, you know, things like that, I think, could be very helpful for us in additional revenue. So let us take a look at that and bring forth a plan for that, too.
Yeah, I think, you know, with our new relationship with Navpoint, maybe that's something to think about, as well as put on an RFP to see if anybody else wants to compete with that. That is not a decision. Moving on, I just wanted to congratulate Chief Sanchez on his retirement, so please pass along thanks for many years of service on behalf of our community, please. Councilmember Russell?
I did have something. I was going to change my mind, but when there are staffing problems, I would greatly appreciate it if you came to council instead of going to the Budget Advisory Committee, because it is very frustrating for me to hear from the Budget Advisory Committee something different than we heard at the meeting before that, so...
Yeah, and I, and I think that communication, as I suggested, you know, it, when I went to you, and the difference in the discussions is obvious to me. I totally agree with you on that. I saw them as an arm for the city council, so I assumed that you would get their report and, but lessons learned. So, I am not afraid to come and tell you, you know, things that are, that are going on in the department. I think it's important for you to know. And just like tonight, I know some of the stuff in here was going to be a little bit contentious, but you need to know. And so, I'd be glad to give you more, as much information as you can take.
Thank you, I appreciate it. And actually, I'm very glad that we have you on the schedule to talk about that again, because that was the other thing I wanted to bring up. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Councilmember Berentone.
If, if you missed, you seem to think it was a lot of information, and there is a lot of information that I want. So, if it would be helpful, since you weren't able to make any notes, then I would be more than happy to go ahead and share with the city manager and with you the questions that I have and what I'd like to seek them forward.
Thank you, because I was looking around going, how am I going to remember all these questions?
Well, I would, I would actually encourage that we list some off now so that we can, so we know what you're thinking, because I have to add. Yeah, but I'd like to, okay.
Yeah, appreciate that. Let's concede the floor to Councilmember Berentone. I'll come back to you in just a moment here, but I do agree with that sentiment. Councilmember Berentone?
Oh, okay. So, I know that Eric writes really fast, so... The district information and the analysis on that, the $725,000 and the current situation and the analysis on what, that breakdown of that many and what's going on with that, the potential selling of that building, and I assume, because you also wrote it down after the mayor said that, that that's not a decision to put an RFP out for that, and we need to have that come back, because we also have it in the information that we were provided from the initial police, police building, that we were going to be doing offside storage. So, we need to make sure what we're doing with buildings, instead of just arbitrarily starting to do things in a study session. So, if we could just get the, the information on the building and what's going on with that and how that's going to fit in, the staffing, the revenue, especially the forfeiture information, since it's quite a bit different from what the Budget Advisory came back with. And the, oh, also, I'd like to know what the process and procedures are for who decides, like, to stop the traffic division or refocus the impact team. And I know that there were some other funding going on for that impact team, so how does that affect that? And is that keeping in their original funding? I just want to know the process and procedures for who makes that decision, and then...
Dispatch overtime clause for this year?
Yeah, oh, yeah, and where we were at for overtime so far for this year, I think that kind of goes back into the staffing. Just wonder, just wonder, my officers, I can't read my writing now on that. And then if, that, he already said the 21-day discovery issue and how, what that's putting on. And if you could maybe give a little bit more information on the comment that got made that you can't just put officers on patrol, because then you're not really offering them anything. That would lead me to believe that we're just going to end up, eventually, that the intention is, is that everybody's promoted and nobody's on the street. And if that's the intent, and so, I think if we could kind of get that into context of, of exactly what that looks like within the culture of the department and what the intention is. Because if we lost two people because they got a special assignment, and then they had to go back to the neighborhood policing, and that's not something we're really hiring for, the culture that we're going for, then we're never really, maybe we're not, we're not giving that impression of having a strong neighborhood policing force, and everybody's just looking to go on to something else. I don't know how you address that, but I'd like to, I'd like to see what that looks like, and he'll, I think he kind of understands. Oh, and, yeah, I didn't insinuate, didn't even come close to that anybody in this room violated anything with the executive session. I said it was discussed in executive session, and because we wanted to try and keep that information kind of close to our vest, so that people didn't know how we were addressing issues that had happened here at city center. What I was bemoaning was that any of the police department or officer would share that with anybody, because I didn't want the public to know. So, if we could just kind of make sure that, even though I know they sign up for something, maybe they didn't think about it, but that it would be something we kind of don't want out there. And it was made very clear to us that you didn't want it out there. So, I just hope you pass that along to them, so that we don't, we keep that going. But I wasn't insinuating that anybody here violated anything with the executive session.
Thank you.
So, sorry if you misunderstood. Was there any of that that I could go? I would be more than happy to write this up again if you would like for tomorrow.
I think we got that, and so what...
Your shorthand?
I have a few more to add.
Oh, so Lynn's going to add, Councilmember Olson's going to add some more, but yeah, I think I have that. What I'll do is, as you see, we issue the report on a weekly basis for council requests. I'll put that in there, but I think I've got it.
Well, I want to make your time as worthwhile when you come back, and I agree with Councilmember Russell, it really is, and you, what you said, it needs to be vetted out a little bit more, and, and it's just a start.
Oh, yeah, I thoroughly agree.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I'm just going to add a few more things, and it might actually be expanding on what she just gave in terms of comparisons, like, so I would love, and you've done this in the past, I think we've had it, maybe comparison of crime over five years, the kinds of crimes, and take a look at that, and then staffing that goes along with that over five years, so that we have some, a little bit more of an historical. And then also with that, our, well, I know we don't probably know what our census is, right? Do we have a guess what we've been between the five years ago and now? That would give us some idea of what our increase, we do know, to some extent, we know some of our multifamily. That would be great to know, because I think that's, yeah, over the last five. And then the overtime, which I think she also mentioned, but over, over the five years too, because it looks like we, if there's some way we can go back to see what the record, track record, and I know what's up and down, that'll help us see that. And then analysis of the change in the kinds of policing that we've done. So, we did make a change, or you did make a change in this more hotspot kind of policing several years ago and not...
2014, yeah.
Right, and then you've made another one recently. So, maybe insert those, when those happen, do we see any kind of, you probably have that analysis already of what you look at, what the impact is of those kinds of choices. And then I do appreciate having some options with the, the sale of the building versus leasing it, and it seems to me...
I don't think we could lease it, because it's for...
That's what I thought, yeah. Yeah, it's a forfeiture, so then you have to, so, you know, there's a lot of ways to do some things. But those are just more of expansions, so thank you, appreciate that. I don't want you to get here either that night with us asking you a lot of stuff that you didn't know we wanted.
Well, more information generates more questions, so we'll see.
Thank you. Further comments or questions for chief or police? Thank you for being here and providing that update, gentlemen. Thank you. I'd like to, I think, take about a five-minute break recess at this point, before we move on to our next item. We're adjourned for about five minutes.
... water before I... I hope it's interesting. They're analyzing the meeting, they have a meeting, so they're doing a, they're doing a meeting analysis this week for my teens class. They have to go to the... It's kind of funny, because the school that they have is really not teenagers, and it's a teenager, so they can say, well, it's a bit difficult here. So, if you have trouble coming, if you want to this one, you'll get at least some interesting perspective. I appreciate it. My students doing the...
Oh, wow. You got it. You got it.
My, my, I got it totally drained. I, I don't know, I must say I love what I put in my bag.
Most of it hit it out like a shot. I think your water level...
There you go. That's probably that.
I hired an assistant once. I have a full partner. You know what? You go do your thing with your mind.
Sure.
You get a staff, you get a person there. Put this person up.
That might be, that's all right.
All right.
He's soft in the crowd.
He's soft in the crowd.
All the fights out of him now.
You know?
My goodness.
So, you screw up.
Oh, I just emailed Sam this morning.
So, I just, I emailed him, and that's all.
Plastic that you have with like all the time, and you put it over your feet, or you put it over your foot, or you put it over your...
I don't know. I just put it over my hands.
Still live behind your ears.
Yeah, but at least he's, he's got, he has a desire to do well.
Yeah, exactly. I can't help, I can't help it.
This patient award.
Yeah, I'm, I'm coming.
Nope, just listening.
Unless you're on the left there for your...
Thank you, I appreciate it. If I start floundering, I don't like this.
Does that like a five minutes?
I want some, I want some, I want some.
Then she, I sent her that thing, and she went to it, so she said she's interested in something, maybe doing...
We have a, we have a...
You guys have a good night.
Thank you.
I'm going to be up in...
I don't know how you look at it like that, just took it one day, but I'm sure I did.
It's a lot.
Interest.
Yeah, it is. I think there's such a ground...
Oh, yeah.
It's like a, it's really tall.
Oh, who got, oh, you got me a thing. Who says this? That's very nice.
Who put the, who slipped this in here? This is great.
Pretty broad discussion, but I agree, it started to tell.
Move forward. Get to the point.
I'm trying to move along.
We're having a discussion there, for the first time in a long time.
Yeah, okay.
Add it in for a couple of the time of the meeting for this subject?
Ah, I don't know. I hear you, I hear you. No, I hear you, dude. I hear you. All right, you want to get us out of here relatively soon, though?
So, this morning, I was listening to an interview with a...
You see her?
Hot seat, so here's, just remember how to operate this.
A psychological worker for the Pentagon.
Okay.
You're listening to this one?
Yeah.
It is an interview this morning, I was listening to.
Go forward.
And the guy was talking about...
He totally is.
Well, his, his, I was like, you know, what they said there at Yale, what they said, was totally in it. But the point is, which really made me start to think, you know, so I just grabbed this company's word, this, about, you know, psychology of a politician.
Okay, folks, if I get folks to start to begin to take their seats, we're going to get started in about one minute.
You better not. You better not.
Better not what?
Oh, I was talking to her.
Oh.
I will, thank you.
Okay, folks, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Welcome back. We're on agenda item six, monthly financial review. Please.
Hi.
Oh, we got the court piece.
Hence the reason she's sitting in here.
Apologize. Thank you. Court Administrator Tamara Wolf is present to discuss the court stuff.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm going to just go ahead and get started and give the overview of where the court's going to go this year and where we've been this, next, where we're going to go next year and where we've been this year. What is the court's purpose? The Inglewood Municipal Court was established by charter in 1959, and the municipal judge is an elected official and directly serves the community in that capacity. A municipal court serves the unique ability to focus on local concerns that have impact on their communities. Our existence is both legal and morally responsible to the community. We ensure an individual's due process. Offenders are held accountable for their actions within community standards, and a court can serve a resolution function within the community as well. Forget I have to do this. This is a picture of my staff doing what they...
Look closer to the mic, I think.
Oh, sorry. This is a picture of my staff doing what they do best, which is work and pride themselves on giving efficient and accurate and courteous information. They made me put the picture in, so...
Looks like Amy.
It did for a second, I thought you were posing.
Not that I know of. So, the municipal court functions are that we are a full-time court. Many metro municipal courts do not handle the breadth and magnitude of violations that we do, such as domestic violence ordinances or juvenile offenses. There are more complex issues associated with these types of violations, but how both are handled can significantly set the tone for the community. For example, we fast-track our DV cases. Someone's arrested tonight for something, they'll be seen tomorrow on our video system. That gives us the opportunity to make sure that we have an immediate impact on a given situation. It's a court's duty to function as a partner with a community and focus on its local concerns. Legal procedures are affected by the state and have an impact on how municipal courts operate. State laws can either restrict or require local procedures without appropriate funding. Oftentimes, someone giving a minor traffic ticket is the only contact they'll ever have with a local government. The court takes this ambassador role very seriously, ensuring everyone is treated respectfully, no matter what they come to court for. Even in a punitive role, the court can have a positive impact in both the community and on the individual offender. Many behavioral courses and treatment programs are most often part of a sentencing process. And one small statistic, out of 34 probation cases that we finalized in 2016, 28 of those successfully completed their treatment programs. It's a pretty good average. 2017 update, our expenditures will be within our budget. We've only used 18% of our 2017 budget to date, so we're on track to remain there. New legislation that mandates court-appointed counsel for all in custody defendants is anticipated to be delayed until July 2018. There is a House bill pending that has passed, was up for discussion at 1:30 this afternoon also, and I haven't seen the results of that yet. But this could have a significant...
Welcome back, we're on Agenda Item Six, Monthly Financial Review. Please. Oh, we got the court piece.
Hence the reason she stood in here.
Thank you. Court Administrator Tamara Wolf is present to discuss the court stuff.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and I'm going to just go ahead and get started and give the overview of where the court's going to go this year and where we've been this... Where we're going to go next year and where we've been this year. What is the court's purpose? The Inglewood Municipal Court was established by charter in 1959, and the municipal judge is an elected official and directly serves the community in that capacity. A municipal court serves the unique ability to focus on local concerns that have impact on their communities. Our existence is both legal and morally responsible to the community. We ensure an individual's due process, offenders are held accountable for their actions within community standards, and a court can serve a resolution function within the community as well. Forget I have to do this. This is a picture of my staff doing what they...
Look closer to the mic, I think.
Oh, sorry. This is a picture of my staff doing what they do best, which is work and pride themselves on giving efficient and accurate and courteous information. They made me put the picture in, so...
Looks like Amy.
It did for a second, I thought you were posing.
Not that I know of.
So the municipal court functions are that we are a full-time court. Many metro municipal courts do not handle the breadth and magnitude of violations that we do, such as domestic violence ordinances or juvenile offenses. There are more complex issues associated with these types of violations, but how both are handled can significantly set the tone for the community. For example, we fast-track our DV cases. Someone's arrested tonight for something, they'll be seen tomorrow on our video system. That gives us the opportunity to make sure that we have an immediate impact on a given situation. It's a court's duty to function as a partner with a community and focus on its local concerns. Legal procedures are affected by the state and have an impact on how municipal courts operate. State laws can either restrict or require local procedures without appropriate funding. Oftentimes, someone giving a minor traffic ticket is the only contact they'll ever have with the local government. The court takes this ambassador role very seriously, ensuring everyone is treated respectfully, no matter what they come to court for. Even in a punitive role, the court can have a positive impact in both the community and on the individual offender. Many behavioral courses and treatment programs are most often part of a sentencing process. And one small statistic, out of thirty-four probation cases that we finalized in 2016, twenty-eight of those successfully completed their treatment programs. It's a pretty good average. Twenty seventeen update, our expenditures will be within our budget, we've only used eighteen percent of our 2017 budget to date, so we're on track to remain there. New legislation that mandates court-appointed counsel for all in custody defendants is anticipated to be delayed until July 2018. There is a House bill pending that has passed, it was up for discussion at 1:30 this afternoon also, and I haven't seen the results of that yet. But this could have a significant financial impact on us if the state does not help provide funding. So this was part of the reason that they came forward this year in 2017, realizing that the impact was going to be significant on municipalities and have asked for this continuance until July of next year. Counsel approved a financial collections for us process last fall, and that extra effort is helpful in enforcing our court orders. The Department of Motor Vehicles changed their electronic interfaces statewide with courts, and this was a huge transition in process for us, and we're happy to say that we finally made it through. This began last September, and we just completed it earlier this month. This is the pie chart for our municipal court expenditures. I think this didn't get changed over to the one I have, because the one I have looks a little more like Pac-Man. But all of our funding does come from the general fund, and eighty percent of it approximately is Personnel Services and nineteen is Operational. Our challenges, as I've mentioned, is that we have state legislative changes that may impact us. Home rule municipal courts have actually been under attack nationwide. Rightly so in some areas, but for those of us that have always prided ourselves on being informative and accurate and not being debtors' courts or debtors' prisons, you know, it's been difficult for us. Some of the legislation that is pending is compromise legislation that will move driving under revocation to the local level. We expect to see that pass this year. Legislation could deny judges the ability to individually assess bond requirements, there's one about mandatory appearance quickly, and another one that would mandate municipal courts to take on previously-held county and district court tasks, such as the sealing of records for juveniles and adults. We have an increased contact with needs-based groups that takes a toll on all of our local resources, as people with mental health concerns or severe drug addictions and the homeless. And then the... One of the other challenges that we'll see is staffing levels change, as filings change, as you've discussed with the chief previously. You know, obviously, any increase in the police force could have an effect on ours, needs also. Looking ahead, the court has a disproportional contact with the homeless and those with mental health and substance abuse issues. This contact both enables us to have an impact on those groups, but strains our current resources. One of the things that we may need to look at, it might be time to consider being proactive rather than reactive to these special needs groups, as some other cities have done. And that could range from having resources available at a court time to all the way up to, I know some municipalities across the nation are providing actual shelters and resources for the people, for the homeless and those types of special needs groups. It's just something that I wanted to put out there, it's another way to focus again... It's another way to comment some of the problems that have been discussed earlier tonight, actually.
Yeah, go ahead. Quick question?
The additional services, when I was over at Bemis, and they have a similar thing to what we're doing now with an officer going through when they have a problem, he had a social worker with him as well, and I had attended another meeting where they had addressed some of these issues, where they were trying to provide some of those services. Do you see that more as a collaboration with the police and the court, or maybe the victim's advocate, or that type of position, or how do you see that? I mean, is there a potential that could play out here?
Absolutely, and that was actually what I was referring to, was some sort of a program like that where, once these people were either in the court system or even beforehand, you know, there's a handful of people that I think the police department contact on a regular basis, and trying to have those resources available for them, either at the initial contact or when they come into court, can be helpful to the community, you know, it can get them into programs and those types of things, rather than just a pure enforcement focus. One of the things we've done, we've actually had meetings already with the police department about what to do with them after the fact, you know, could we have more community service involved for these people once they've been adjudicated, and, you know, I think that's something that's definitely on the table. All those things take funding, you know, that sometimes you can get a lot of volunteers, but there's still somebody that might need to run the program, that type of thing, so...
And would you be an advocate of them? I mean, some of the programs, I guess, are trying to eliminate them from being arrested, so is there... If there's some way to partner some of these programs together, they're trying to keep them from, like, maybe being diverted to a social worker rather than having to be arrested, so I'd like to see some of that information.
Actually, that would probably be something that would be handled at the police level, because I can't tell them who to arrest and not to arrest.
But whether we were sharing that resource or not, yeah, okay. I would... Yeah, I'd like to get that information, that's awesome, you're looking into that.
And then, as I've said, legislative mandates could have significant impacts on the court. If we don't come... If the state does not come through with funding for court-appointed counsel on in custody defendants, that could really top a hundred thousand dollars a year easily, depending on how we would make that come into play. So hopefully, that will pass, and we will see some state funding in some form for that to happen. I will be coming to counsel for the 2018 budget, looking at reassessing our associate judge fees. Our associate judges are the lowest paid in the metro area with the highest restriction requirements. They have to live in the city, most associate judges in other communities do not. So we have a limited pool to begin with, and so I would like to come to counsel with that during our budgeting timeframe to better compensate our valued associate judges.
Would you just let us know that include the amount that they normally work, like how often they're utilized?
Right, you know, they're only... I will do that. Our judges are... Just fill in, so that helps with those things. And then, to recap, we serve a multitude of clientele, from the driver that gets their first traffic ticket to the domestic violence offender with complex concerns, and we have a unique opportunity to understand the needs of the community and affect best practices and all the procedures ensuring due process standards are met. We'll continue a watchful eye in regard to the legislative impacts, and certainly bring that to counsel as soon as we would see something that would come forward with that. Questions?
Thank you, questions, comments from counsel?
I'm sorry?
I got to ask mine.
Okay.
Seeing that, I'll thank you for coming in and giving a great presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Look forward to following up on some of these issues you've raised this evening at a later date. Please.
Ms. Barrantyne, your last request was an analysis of how many hours the associate judges work.
Right, since she's talking about the pay, then we can make a better analysis of how much that's going to cost us, if we know how much they're being utilized.
Gotcha.
And I don't think I know how many we have at this point, but just how many and how much we're using them, and then we can figure out how much that would impact.
Thank you, I just want to make sure I got that down right.
Thank you, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Six now, with the Monthly Financial Review. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Wrinkle is present to review the March 2017 Monthly Financial Report with counsel. Good evening, Director Wrinkle.
Good evening, I'm always worried whether this should be exciting or boring, and I'm really glad to say it's boring.
This is exciting.
It's exciting that it's boring. So we actually have more revenue than we did last year by about seven hundred and eighty-one thousand at this time. It is on track with where we expect to have our budget, though, because we did increase our revenue expectations for the 17 budget, so we are on target. Our expenditures are also on target with where we are about this time this year, which is a little bit under a straight-line budget graph. So we're in good shape that way. We are riding on the coattails of the good fortune we had with Area Seven beginning in January. Other than that, there's really not too much exciting, unless anyone saw something that they have a question on.
You were saying total revenues were up seven hundred something? I saw just on page three, let's see, that green line, it's like the total revenues there, and it does seventeen or sixteen.
I'm sorry, exceeds expenditures, I'm sorry. Our revenues exceed expenditures by seven hundred and eighty-one thousand.
I see, thank you. Other questions or comments from counsel? Seeing that, I'll thank you for a positive report. Move on to councilmember's choice, would anybody like to kick us off this evening? Thank you, sir. Councilmember Russell, do you have anything for councilmember's choice? Come back to you if you want a second.
I probably did, but I don't remember right now, so...
If you think of it, just let me know, and we'll come back to you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrantyne.
I was glad to go on the tour for Rappahoe Acres, that was very interesting, some very nice people, and I was a little more jealous of some of those houses at first, until I realized they were a lot smaller, some of them, and they're but very unique, and it was amazing that a lot of them have furnished their homes in the mid-century as well, they stuck with that theme going on there. I'm not sure how much the outside landscaping is, but some of them, I think, tried to stick to that, too, so that was interesting. Had a meeting with about seven businesses on Friday on South Broadway there, and some concerns about homeless issues and some police issues, and they were insistent that I should see that for myself, so I spent about two hours Saturday night walking the alley on Lincoln and Broadway and Coman Broadway, and so I'll try and put together a little bit more information about where they'd like to go, talk to a couple of the food banks about the way that they're managing some of, like, the dumpster area and things like that, whether maybe we should start locking some of that up, so we discourage, you know, something that isn't even healthy for people to be going out there. But in... All in all, it was... I was pretty impressed that it was clean, kept up, that the businesses are trying to minimize areas where people can go ahead and be in there. Did have an opportunity also on Saturday to attend the meal, and wasn't able to stay for the fellowship because I had another appointment, and then I had to come back and walk the alleys for two hours. But met the people that do... Are provided service over at Good Life, and discuss some of the concerns and issues that are going on, that people are attributing to some of that business as well, and what their mission is. So we're going to be meeting again, and I know those businesses want to have some additional meeting, and I will share with the mayor and the city manager some of the concerns that got brought up on Saturday night from... I had an ex-marine and a guy from the karate place, so I wasn't going to go traipsing around the alleys at eleven o'clock at night on my own, but they were very sweet to have accompanied me, and apparently both of them walked that area quite a bit, so they were able to show me things that I might not have normally been aware of, so I was grateful for that. So I spent a great amount of time either going to shelters, or the food banks, or to the businesses in that area, trying to address some of the concerns that they have, and see if we can come to some mutual respect and things that work out for everybody, so that they can all accomplish their mission. Went to some of the residences in that area as well, and, you know, I'm very grateful for... Very grateful for how charitable, how generous this community is, a lot of great people, and a lot of them that are barely hanging on to keep their homes and their families and their property up, and I have to represent them, and they have some stories, some of them that are worse than the people that are on the street now, they just made different choices, and they're trying to hang on to what they've got and want to make sure that those boundaries are held between different people's missions, so we're not interfering with what other people are trying to accomplish. And I think it's going to be a good project. Lot of the people that were at Good Life, very nice, had some great conversations, very interesting insights, and I'll have to share the story about Officer McGrath with one of them, and it was very uplifting, so it's nice when people make right choices, and we've got those facilities there, but we've got to make sure it works within the community, too, so just spent a great deal of time working on that. And I think that was it. Oh, and I finally did sign up for the CML meeting, I did decide to go, so I did talk to Krista today. That was all I had, thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez?
I just want to thank CJ and Historic Preservation Society again for inviting us on the tour of the Rappahoe Acres, that was really neat, and it was nice of those homeowners to share their home with us, and it was really cool, I hope we get to do that again.
Thank you, Councilmember Olson?
Yeah, it was enjoyable to be there as well, so I know that they really appreciated those of us that could come, and those of you that couldn't, I think they'd love to have you come around another time if you can, summertime...
And they do serve Alcoa.
They did.
It wasn't a city event, though.
I don't know if others of you have had this, but it'd be interesting talking about how to help apartment buildings have recycling. I have had so many people ask me, and one more recently that I forwarded on to Amy and asking KEB, but there are a lot of apartment buildings that seem not to provide recycling in their building, which seems like such a no-brainer these days, but they're usually people who've moved from Denver into Inglewood, in Denver, it's required, but Inglewood isn't, and so I think that... I don't think that the Marx do, I don't think Kimberly Village does, almost all of them in my district, anyway, which are a little bit, some of them, higher-end in terms of rent even, I don't know if Kent Place does, I haven't checked on that, but I wondered if others are hearing that, or if you're interested at all in trying to help encourage and provide better information to apartment owners that are, what do you call them, I guess, managers, building managers, to create something.
I don't have a lot of apartments, but I'm surprised.
Sure thing, yeah, in this day and age, you would expect a lot more.
If you don't mind, I'll just throw out that we have a really good contact with the Apartment Association, who recently hosted a meeting for us, and so perhaps we could start to disseminate...
Yes, and it was during the day when I work, but if they have... Yeah, maybe he'd be the right one to say, you know, I don't know if these other apartments are even in that association, so... They ought to be.
Even if they're not, hopefully, they at least have a contact to pass along to us.
Did they? Oh, good, yeah. Well, that'd be great, let's work on it that way, because I know some people would really be happy. And I think that's it.
Mayor's Choice, I did just have a couple of brief items, you know, I also wanted to thank the folks who put together the Acres Tour, it was really nice to see a really unique community in our neighborhood, and, you know, it's really great that they take such a great, you know, I don't know, source of pride, as far as their pride of ownership there in that neighborhood, and disseminating a local newsletter and calendar and things, that really makes that neighborhood, I think, more uniquely desirable, so I applaud them for their efforts there. Did just want to pass along to the council, BAC, the Budget Advisory Committee, they did provide a little bit of feedback on what we passed on first reading, and are asking for a couple minor amendments. Did want to just plant the seed or throw those out there, that, you know, probably will be asking for these amendments at our next meeting, and you guys can decide, you know, where we're at on that, but, you know, it was... I apologize, I don't have the language right in front of me, but there was B, C, and D sections of that ordinance. The B section, they had a question about the beginning of the year, the language mandates that they meet or begin the process at the beginning of the year, there was some discussion about whether that meant calendar year or budget cycle, and some folks suggested if it was budget cycle, then that language isn't really problematic, but if it's calendar year, they start to view a concern about not meeting, not being able to meet that requirement. They suggested that, you know, C perhaps be removed, it was somewhat redundant, and then D was probably the biggest feedback, which mandates that they meet with each department every year, and they suggested that that seems like a relatively heavy mandate, and they would suggest that they would meet with departments as needed, rather than sort of mandating that they must meet with every department, and so they were suggesting some language that would say that they didn't need to meet with every department every year, but that they could at their sort of discretion. For what that's worth, I'll give you that feedback. Also, you know, I think we need to probably look at appointing somebody for next month, so if there's any takers on that, let me know, you know, if not, I'm happy to kind of be reappointed in that. I don't know if we need an official action on that, or how we'd like to handle that, but I'd like to see something come forward. Maybe not next week, but the last meeting in... Well...
Didn't we say there were two?
Yes, there are two. I think there is a liaison and a backup liaison, or is it just two liaisons? Two liaisons, okay, great, so yeah, we'll appoint hopefully both those positions. I think Councilmember Olson said she was willing to sort of continue to serve in that role. I kind of agree, and so if there's anybody new who wants to, send an email or something, but if we're unable to find somebody, then we'll just go ahead and plug us back in, so that we can... I kind of agree, and so if there's anybody new who wants to, send an email or something, but, um, if, uh, we're unable to find somebody, then we'll just go ahead and, uh, plug us back in, um, so that we've got some sort of official capacity there. Probably doesn't need to happen at our next meeting, but probably by the first meeting, second meeting in May. Finally, I just wanted to throw out there that, uh, you know, I know some of our meetings have been going a little bit long, and in an effort to try to get us out of here in a timely manner, I'm going to suggest that, uh, on study session nights at about eight forty-five and on regular meeting nights at about nine forty-five, we do a little bit of a triage of our agenda, and that we, you know, take a look at it and try to determine what do we really need to do, and what can we let go for next week. Uh, that way we don't try to end up, and, you know, that way we can kind of minimize the times that we're here, uh, past ten PM. In my mind, I'd like to be out of our regular meetings by ten and our study sessions by nine. Um, so, you know, hopefully we can agree to kind of looking very briefly at the agenda at those times, and if everybody thinks that's a reasonably good idea, then we'll just go with that, but if anybody has any, uh, feedback or like to see something different, just go ahead and let me know. I think that's all I had for this evening. City Manager's Choice?
Uh, just two, two fairly quick issues, I think. Uh, number one, I'm going to be attending some professional development out of the state later this week. Mr. Robinson will be covering for me Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
He made the face back there.
Oh, he did? He knows that. That's, that's his job. Um, and then secondarily, uh, as the council is aware, we had a discussion on impact fees, and I reached out to several firms, and the answer I'm getting back from the firms is really quite interesting. Uh, they're asking the question, as I provided them a bunch of detailed information, uh, whether or not we really want to move forward, because two of the three firms don't believe the juice, if you will, is worth the squeeze for the work. Um, and what that means is, again, if you look at our capital improvement plans, we don't have a whole lot of projects that actually talk about needing expansion due to new growth, other than the police department, which we're going to fund through a bond. Uh, a lot of it's just fixing, um, existing deficiencies, and existing deficiencies can't be covered by impact fees, and so I'm raising that now, just so that, so that you're aware. I'm trying to work through with, uh, internally with staff to take a look at our capital improvement plan again, to see if there is something that's driven by new growth that we can add to that, that would help us to ma- move forward. But I didn't want to waste, uh, immiscible resources on spending money on a consultant to pay for something that isn't going to work, so just raise that for you.
No, the only reason I was doing that, I, I didn't want to give you the wrong impression, was that, see, I did sign up for the class for CML on the, uh, impact fees, and I, I had heard at a couple of meetings that I went to that there was some, uh, additional information that was coming out about them. I'm willing to consider that, but we've been dealing with this for a long time. It's not going to hurt for another couple of months, but I did sign up for that. I was just like.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you did, but I think that'll be helpful, too, to, to hear from that, uh, that attorney that's going to be speaking is, is the person I did speak to as an, as an expert as well on how this works.
Well, I'd be interested in what they have to say, and then we'll bring that back, but that's why I was going, oh, because it wasn't what you were saying.
This is Manager's Choice. Let's let Manager's Choice go.
Understood. No, I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think he likes that clarification.
No, thank you, and that's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I did want to bring up real briefly July third. I think there was some question mark about whether we're going to meet on July third. Uh, I feel like the alternative is to meet on July fifth. Uh, is that council's, uh, desire? Anybody else want to weigh in on whether we should be meeting on the third or the fifth?
Or we can get three more people that can't come.
Uh, you know, the timing of the calendar is pretty rare. We haven't dealt with this exact issue in a very long time. Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, and that's why I stuck it with the third, but, you know, I mean, I suppose we could punt it to later in the week, uh, but that would be an unprecedented kind of thing, so, um, you know, in my mind. Yeah, we, everybody okay with that, and, you know, unless everybody's got any other suggestions. We're going to be meeting on July third. Great. City Attorney's Choice?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you, and with that, we're hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
As long as there's no fireworks on the third.
Who was the wonderful charging person for me? Thanks so much.
That's a monster charge.